Hi Jane.
Hi Jessica.
Thanks for joining us this evening.
Sure, I got a text a minute ago that Kimberly Moore is having major wifi issues, so she will jump in as soon as she can.
Okay, we're just getting ready to, we're live, getting ready to livestream to YouTube, so it's spinning right now, we're almost there.
Join us this evening, sure.
Okay, alright, we're on YouTube and ready to go whenever you are Mayor Smith.
Okay. It's 7:30, so why don't I go ahead and call the Oxford City Council meeting for Tuesday 18th to order. Ms Eaton, will you please call the roll?
Mr Bracken.
Here.
Mr Ellerby.
Here.
Mr Prithrich.
Yes.
Ms Ragoo. Mr Snively.
I'm here.
Ms Sutherd.
Yes, here.
And Mayor Smith.
Here. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Moved by Mr Snively, second.
Seconded.
Seconded by Sutherd. Ms Eaton, will you please call the roll?
Mr Ellerby.
Yes.
Mr Prithrich.
Yeah.
Ms Ragoo.
Yes.
Mr Snively.
Yes.
Ms Sutherd.
Yes.
Mr Bracken.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes. Alright, tonight on this historic anniversary of the Women's Right to Vote passage, we have a proclamation, and I'm going to have Counselor Sutherd help me with the proclamation, being a member of the League of Women Voters. So I'll let her go ahead and read the proclamation, and I will jump in at the end to finish it off, so whenever you're ready.
Thank you. August 18th today is the centennial of the ratification of the 19th Amendment by the states, but August 26th is the date the 19th Amendment was certified by the Secretary of State and is noted as the Women's Equality Day, so that's what we're celebrating. Whereas on August 26th, 1920, the 19th Amendment was certified as part of our national constitution, assuring that the right of citizens of the United States to vote shall not be denied or abridged by the United States or any state on account of sex, and whereas the struggle for women's suffrage was the first step toward full and equal participation of women in our nation's life. In recent years, giant strides have been taken to eliminate discrimination through our laws and to pave the new avenues for equal economic opportunity for women. And whereas this year, August 26th, 2020, is the 100th anniversary of this important milestone in US history, and whereas we recognize that attitudes cannot be changed by laws alone, prejudices still exist in the way of progress for women, we therefore must do all that we can to overcome the barriers against what is fair and right by providing equal opportunity for everyone and voting rights for all citizens, and by urging all citizens to exercise their right to vote in local, state, and national elections.
Now therefore, I, Michael Smith, Mayor of the City of Oxford, do hereby proclaim August 26th, 2020 to be Women's Equality Day in the City of Oxford, and urge all citizens to join in celebrating the progress, celebrating the progress while we continue the work of providing equal opportunities for all. Alright. Moving on, we have Dr. Jane Bromwell, VP for Student Life with us today to give us a little presentation and update from Miami University on what's happening there, so I will turn it over to Dr. Bromwell.
Hi, thanks for having us here. So I am here with Kimberly Moore, who is our Dean of Students. And so we both are gonna share some of the background about Miami's plans related to COVID and where we are in our process and how we're looking towards the next couple of months. I have been giving this analogy lately that, you know, I've been saying that there are a million moving pieces, and a student said, wow, this really is kind of like a jigsaw puzzle. And I said, yeah, but it's more like the jigsaw puzzle that you buy at a garage sale in a bag that you don't know if all the pieces are there, and it doesn't provide the picture of what you're trying to get to at the end. That is the messiest puzzle that you're ever gonna find, because it is such a novel virus that information is changing all the time, recommendations change daily. Kimberly was just texting me a little while ago, you know, Arizona was on the hot spot list for Ohio, thinking about mandatory quarantine, and today it's off the list, but will it be back on before students get back? Nobody knows. So I have been really, really grateful to be with the team of people that from the start, everything we did, every decision we made was based on health and safety. That that is what we are steering towards, and the most important thing that is guiding our decisions. And it really is the only way to approach this. So we are trying to be as flexible and adaptable as possible in a world where everything feels so uncertain, people are looking for certainty, and it is more certainty than we can provide. So we have been doing our best to communicate widely to our students all summer long. Our Return to Campus Committee sends weekly emails updating them on what our plans are. We also send messages from President Crawford and our leadership team. We have an extensive website, MiamiOH Healthy Together, that we are continuing to update every week with new information, to have as comprehensive of a site as we can. So we did not go the route of a lot of other schools that did a printed plan, because we knew things changed, we keep changing. So our website, we could continually update as information changes and add to it for questions. We also then made the very, very hard decision, as you're aware, a few weeks ago, we decided that with the trends around the country, knowing that 40% of our students come from states other than Ohio, that as we as a country do not have this pandemic under control, and there are new hotspots all the time. Those were going up, not down. The same was true in Ohio, Butler County was categorized as red or three out of four levels for a time. We were looking at the availability of testing, and it was both harder to get a test unless you were symptomatic. And testing time from labs is now anywhere from two to 10 or even 14 days. So looking at all of that, we made the hard decision that we were not ready to bring 20,000 students back to Oxford yet. That it was not gonna be a safe thing for them, for our faculty staff, or for the community of Oxford as a whole. There are, of course, ramifications for that in other ways, or economic issues, but but the health and safety issues did need to come first. So every student has until this Friday to make a decision of one of three options. Excuse me. So we began graduate student classes in person yesterday. The one, so every student has a mixture of in-person, hybrid, and online classes. In-person classes for graduate students started yesterday. All undergraduate classes, even the ones designated as face-to-face, are remote until September 21st. We decided that we would do this phased-in plan that the governor recommended. So Phase 1, over the summer, we brought back some athletes, tested our protocols, made some changes. Phase 2, we were hearing from many off-campus students that when their leases started, that they were gonna be coming back to campus. So this is Phase 2, but they're starting classes remotely. Then every student needs to say either they will return to face-to-face classes on September 21st, or Option 2, they could stay at home at their permanent residence for the entire semester. It is not intended for people who want to live in Oxford off-campus and take classes remotely. They are agreeing that they're gonna stay at their permanent residence and not access campus or campus services, or Option 3, they could defer admission or take a leave of absence for the semester. So they do have until this Friday to make that decision. Through all of that, we also then did, I did a series of webinars, so one for off-campus students specifically, one for on-campus students, and one for parents, where not only talked through the options, but talked about what to expect when they come back to campus, what the face covering policy is, what the physical distancing policy is, talking about testing and contact tracing and quarantine and isolation, which we'll talk about more in a bit. Helping them understand that they are being asked to to be active, responsible, community members that are responsible not just for themselves, but for their roommates or classmates or faculty and the community of Oxford as a whole. And talking about the pledge that they need to take to come back, acknowledging that there are steps that they have to take that they can come back and have a very full experience, and we want them to have a full experience. We don't want them to not have a campus experience, we want them to have a safe one. So physical distancing, limits of 10 people, whether in any gathering on campus or off, and being aware of how their behavior affects others. So making sure that that message was clear to on-campus, off-campus students and to their parents. And then we also did a Return to Campus video that I narrated, him walking around, letting people see, this is going to look different. They cannot come back to Oxford or to Miami and expect that it is gonna look the way that it looked last fall. This isn't what anybody is choosing, this isn't what any of us want, but it is life in a pandemic, it is a once-in-a-lifetime thing that any of us are experiencing, and we all have to do our part to get through this together. So I'm gonna pause to see if you have any questions before we jump into testing, quarantine, and isolation. Alright, so testing is a part of the science that keeps changing. So lots of questions, we work very closely with TriHealth, who runs McCullough Hyde Hospital, and they also run our Student Health Service. They have an extensive network, as you know, throughout Cincinnati, and we talk to them every single day and are consulting with Dr. Blatt, who is the head of infectious medicine for TriHealth. We've also been consulting with the Butler County Department of Health, the Ohio Department of Health, our colleagues at other Ohio Publix. And there is lots of debate about the efficiency and usefulness of testing for people who are not symptomatic, and using that to lead to good outcomes for our community. So for instance, we have known from the beginning, we are going to offer testing for every student or faculty member or staff member who is either symptomatic or is a close contact for those who are symptomatic. That was not a question, we have that testing capability and we're ready to do that. We decided, however, not to require people to submit a test prior to move in, because what we, what the consensus was among the experts was that these are tests that it makes people feel good to say, you tested everybody before they arrived, but it doesn't actually affect your health outcomes. So for instance, at Purdue, they were saying, you have to show that you had a negative test between August 1st and 24th. A negative test on August 2nd tells nothing about what you are on August 25th. So what it does is it draws away tests from a community, because you're using these tests, and it doesn't have a great outcome, it isn't necessarily covered by insurance, so it's a financial burden. And if you look at a school, like Notre Dame just required everybody to do testing before they arrived. They had 33 people who had a positive test when they arrived, and about 10 days later, I think they're up in the 600 range now of positive cases. So that is why we're not doing the pre-entry testing. What we are looking at right now is wide net testing and surveillance testing. So if you think about concentric circles, you test the symptomatic people first, then the next group around that is wide net. So let's say that you have somebody who lives on the floor of a residence hall, then the wide net is testing that whole floor. Then surveillance testing is testing a more random, larger piece of the population. So it is saying, this isn't a real number, but that you're gonna test 100 people, you know, a week from a selection of residence halls, or you're gonna test one fraternity a week, or you're gonna test one athletic team a week. So we're looking at the capability and working with TriHealth to look at that wide net and surveillance testing to have that in place as the science makes sense. So we have a testing group that meets every week, and we will continue to evolve our strategy as the science and availability evolves as well. So I'm gonna turn it over to Kimberly to talk about quarantine and isolation and some other pieces of our plan.
Hello, everyone. I'm not sure if you can see me or just hear me, it looks like I might be frozen. Jane, I only see you, can you give me a thumbs up if you can hear me? Okay.
I can hear you, but I cannot see you.
Okay, well, I'm gonna talk and hope for the best. Um, so I'm, okay. Here I am. So I'm the Dean of Students, for folks who may not know me, Kimberly Moore. And I'm gonna talk about quarantine and isolation. They're a bit more sensitive of subjects, I can't talk about locations, I can't really talk about those kind of details or capacity, but what I'm gonna do is talk more broadly. So there is a distinction between quarantine and isolation. Quarantine is for students who are not symptomatic, that they may have been exposed to somebody who tested positive or probable positive for COVID-19. So they've been in close contact with somebody who has been positive. Versus isolation is for somebody who has tested positive or is considered ill, that means has symptoms consistent with COVID-19. And so we will route students based on what Jane had talked about in regards to testing. So as students present with symptoms or through contact tracing, it's determined that they've been in contact with somebody who's symptomatic and/or has COVID-19, we will quarantine those students and isolate the ill students. And so we have distinct spaces designated for both of those tracks. It's important to also know that, other than a diagnostic or a contact tracing route to quarantine or isolation, that there are preventive measures that have been dictated by guidance from the CDC and/or the Ohio Department of Health. And that is for travelers, right? We have individuals who may travel from a country who have not, who are coming direct, right? They originate from a country that is on the CDC's list of high-risk countries that require 14-day quarantine once in Oxford or in the US. And then we also have a group of students who originate or will be traveling from six Ohio-designated states that have a travel advisory that recommend 14-day quarantine upon arrival to Ohio. And so there are six states as of today, there were different six states as of a few days ago. So we're tracking that, monitoring that, and doing what we can to work with families and students to give them as much information before they arrive here, to know what to expect, to know what to expect and how to prepare for quarantine if they do come onto campus and live in our halls. We are also communicating to students who fall in those categories, who live off-campus, and working closely with Butler County Health to communicate quarantine expectations to those students as well. So our off-campus students, who may find themselves being required by order of Butler County Health to quarantine and/or isolate, will be expected to do so in their off-campus residence. If they cannot comply with the expectations of a quarantine order or an isolation order, we will work with them in the office of the Dean of Students to see if we can manage an on-campus isolation or quarantine space for those students. But if their off-campus facility or off-campus residence meets the guidance and standards set by Butler County Health, they would be expected to quarantine or isolate in their off-campus residence. So those are the sort of categories and routing associated with quarantine and isolation. I will leave room for questions here, but I will then move into a little bit of information about consequences for off-campus behavior.
I see a question for Mr. Snively.
No. No, what I'm really interested in is what Dr. Moore said is coming next.
Okay.
Okay. So what's coming next is what our approach and plan is to accountability. Particularly, I know that there's an interest in off-campus students' behavior and how we will be holding students accountable for that behavior through our on-campus or our internal accountability systems. So the Code of Conduct applies regardless of where a student is. If a student is enrolled and is a Miami student, they are expected to meet the standards set in our code. There are two code categories that apply here. One is failure to comply, and the other is endangering health and safety. So COVID-19-related behaviors or incidents have to be reported. So we've been communicating to students and educating students on the expectations we have for them in the COVID contacts at Miami. We've done that with a pledge, and we've also done that bolstered by our Code of Conduct. And so whether they're off-campus or on-campus, does not matter, they are obligated to those two things. The pledge does not apply necessarily to a student who is engaging 100% remotely from their permanent address in California or somewhere like that. But if students opt to engage on campus in any way, they were required to sign that pledge, and that pledge sets a set of expectations for students around COVID-19 in addition to the standard Code of Conduct. And so expectations around facial coverings, social distancing, hosting, limiting to groups to 10 or under, to being responsible if you are asked to participate in contact tracing, participate in testing, or isolation or quarantine, all of those things, we have to have cooperation from our students. And if they choose not to comply, they will go through our community standards process or our conduct process. If a student is reported for irresponsible hosting, hosting that violates the expectation around a minimum of 10 guests, they will absolutely and have been charged with endangering the health and safety of others and/or failure to comply. So we are fully prepared to hold accountable students who do not meet the expectations that we have set for them, either by code or by COVID pledge. I'm seeing, William, you wanting to step in there, so that's why I paused. Go ahead.
So what is the consequence if they have violated our codes and/or your codes? What are the consequences and what do students know will happen to them?
Sure. So the consequences, failure to comply and endangering, those two particular categories or violations of our code come with the possibility of suspension or expulsion. It doesn't mean we start there, we take every case. Students are afforded due process, we weigh the evidence, and we use a preponderance of evidence standard. And so if it is, you know, found that they are more likely or not than not to have been responsible for violating the charge, then they very well, it doesn't take a history, they could be sent home, which means suspension. So suspension is a temporary separation between student and the university, could be a semester, a year, or longer, and then of course dismissal is more permanent. So we are not, there were quite a few parties over the weekend that violated our expectations. And so those students are running through our process, and they are facing violations that carry suspension. So just, oh, go ahead.
I was just saying, thank you.
Well, you're welcome. There are two additional points that I wanted to share before questions. There are two ways to report incidents that you may witness off-campus. So there is a two links on the homepage of Miami's Healthy Together site. And one says "off-campus" and one says "on." The important thing they have to remember is that if it's a Miami-related, you want Miami to follow up with these students. You need to fill out the incident report that says "on-campus." That means the campus will hold those students accountable, the university will. And if you want the City of Oxford to know, then the City of Oxford has a form there as well, and you can report incidents through that channel. But if you want, I mean, the city and Miami are communicating quite effectively, and it's just really been a great partnership. And so even if you fill out one and you needed to get to the other, we do talk. But if you want Miami to hold these students accountable, make sure you're filling out the Community Standards COVID-19 Behavior form that's available on the homepage of Healthy Together website. So I believe that was what Jane and I wanted to share with you preemptively here, but I'm sure both of us are willing to take as many or as few questions as you have for us.
I want to add one more quick thing before questions, and that is just what comes next. So while we are certainly hoping, we are all hoping, that students are able to return to on-campus instruction September 21st, that is not a given, that is not a guarantee. Each day this week, we have seen schools around the country that are going back and sending people home or changing decisions. So by early September, we're gonna be looking at national trends, Ohio trends. We're gonna look to see, has, where are the numbers in Oxford? Have students been able to follow our protocols? What is the capacity of testing? How quickly is quarantine and isolation filling up? So we are gonna look, and where are our staff and faculty absences as well, because we have to have enough people healthy in the dining halls to serve our students' food to be able to be open to students. So student behavior, how that also affects faculty and staff come into play as well. So we are hoping to open, but I just wanna be sure that you know that there is the chance that that decision could change based on what happens the next few weeks.
Right. I'm seeing Mr. Prithrich's hand there.
So first, I want to thank you both for coming, you know, I was hoping that you would be able to come and join us. Some of us, because for example, I'm a city councilor and a professor and a parent of a child, an incoming freshman, I get as much information as a person's reasonably gonna get. But I think having the rest of the community here, what Miami's doing, is really, really important and is reassuring. So I have a couple of questions. First is, do you have an estimate of how many Miami students are currently living in Oxford off-campus? That's the first basic question. Sophomores were released from their housing contracts, and many of them availed themselves of the local opportunity. Do you have a rough ballpark on how many off-campus students we're dealing with in 2020?
I have that number. I just ran it today, it's an estimate, and it is based on self-reporting, so that's important to know. But we were at 6,717 today, who currently list Um but we were at six thousand seven hundred and seventeen today who currently list uh an off-campus Oxford address.
Okay. Um, all right. So that's, I I've been curious about that. Um my next question is is, so the pledge uh is on the assumption that they will be engaging in the campus. Um but let's let's engage in a hypothetical, which is no one's desired outcome. But seeing that Notre Dame and Michigan State both in the last few hours went online, let's let's imagine that there is no return to online, there is no return to in-person learning and and maybe, I don't know, hypothetically, the campus could be closed. I don't know if that's a scenario. It was in the spring. What does it mean to that, what does it mean to the pledge? For example, if those students are not actually engaging on campus um as the pledge kind of envisions, but they signed it and they're here and they're here until December, um what role would Miami have? And and what obligation would those students have to Miami even if the campus is closed and learning is online all semester?
I can take that one too, Jane. Um basically, like I said earlier, students are obligated to the Code of Conduct no matter where they are. That is our floor. That is the minimum expectations we have for all of our students. The pledge was the layer that landed on sort of on top in the context of Oxford. And so if campus is, what, I'll use your word. I don't know if we would ever use this word, but uh closed. Um it and students are still engaging off-campus in Oxford and they're still enrolled, they are still obligated to the expectations that we have. Um that I can say unequivocally.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh Mr. Bracken.
I was wondering if you know how many students are currently going through that process from events that happened this weekend or this past week or two.
So we're sifting through um reports and data and we have to connect, do a lot of dot connecting um as far as um, you know, who lives at some of these reported places and work with the city to try to get citations and and reports in from Oxford Police Department. So um we have right now on record about nineteen cases um that are going through. There's lots of different numbers of of individuals who live at each of those addresses. So I don't have a total number of students who are going through our conduct system right now, but at this point, it's well over thirty.
Are they residents or are they people who attended parties or both or?
Um we go off police reports. So it's um if the if the residents, right? If the if the at the individuals who live at the address of citation, um then they will automatically all get pulled pulled into the system and and but if the police reports also indicate names of of students presumably um who attended but also were listed in the police report, they would participate as well. It's the job of the hearing officer to sift through and and decide responsibility.
So what about if somebody, there's not necessarily a police report, but they use one of the links on the Healthy Together site to register that a help um a violation happened off-campus?
So it really, it really would depend on the level of detail the individual would provide. Um it, if if someone just says, you know, there was a party, there were a hundred people, it was the Gray House on Collins, that's not going to help us. Um you know, there's probably more than one Gray House on Collins. But if somebody could, just for for community members to know, it's really important that if you see something, the more information you can collect and put into the report, the more we can follow up and actually hold individuals accountable. So I'm not saying to go up to every student standing in a in a in a yard and ask what their name is. But if you can get an address, if you can indicate the time, if you can indicate what you saw in detail, if you can take pictures, um all of those things help us out. And if you don't have names and we have an address, then we can talk to the students who live there um and pursue it that way. But it's always best to get as much information as you can and submit it through those incident reports.
If people were to actively try to report all the parties that are going on, would staff at Miami be able to process all those incidents?
Well, there's a big step in the middle here that I would recommend. I mean, I would recommend if you see an active gathering that is violating um, you know, CDC guidance or Oxford ordinance or our code, I would strongly recommend that you call uh and engage the Oxford Police um because they're the ones who can break that party up and stop it before. I mean, the longer these things go on, the more dangerous they are. And so um, you know, Miami wouldn't engage in real time. If you think about it, we we're responding to the information that we have after the fact. And so it's a two-step process, really. If you see an a gathering particular or if you see a a group of students who um, you know, aren't wearing masks or whatever it might be at the time or facial coverings, then I would would, one, engage the police and then, two, write your own report. And then we have as much information, we have the police, the police report, which helps us. And then we have another eyewitness report, which helps us.
Yeah, I agree with that. That all makes sense. I was just worried about um stretching out of our resources, you know, on some of the nights that are associated with partying, particularly, there might be ten or more parties. And I know our police force is going to be stretched pretty thin, so I just want to make sure there was a mechanism that we could report it. And it could still be processed because that processing might get pretty heavy at times, I think.
Yeah, yes, for both of us.
That I'd also remember that students do live in houses that may have eight or ten people. So ten people on their porch without masks is not necessarily a party that we will, you know, do something with. They they can be in their yard with their residents. It's like their family group. So it's also not every gathering. It's gathering that violate Ohio regulations.
Sure, although there's plenty that are well over ten as well.
All right, I'm seeing Councillor Ragoo and then Mr. Snively and then Councillor Sully.
Thanks for being here. I know everyone has so many questions and I think that, you know, Miami being at the table and being um the one to probably provide the most enforcement would probably keep us the safest um public health-wise. Um so as far as just checking out the site, it doesn't look like, at least I checked out for off-campus reporting a problem. Um it doesn't look like there's a place to provide a photo. Is there any way we could include the photos that people might have taken? Um it seems like an easy thing of, oh, the person is out there, time spent with this party. Um and then the other thing would be, what jurisdiction does Miami Police have on this? Because they're obviously um enforcing Miami Code Two. So I'm wondering what role they have in to play in this and if there's any way to directly, um instead of taxing only the city's resources with our police, is there any way to be linking this to the Miami Police?
So when you were talking about the photo piece, um were you talking about the city of Oxford's form or Miami's form?
Uh just for example, if there, someone wants to report an off-campus problem, um through where that took us and that took us to, I believe it was the city's website. So I had to click on about four different things and then as I go through, there's no place to place a photo. So I didn't click on the on-campus link.
Chantel, I can see if I can add a photo link. I have to explore that. That would be um our reporting page. So I'll look.
Okay, great.
So in regards to MUPD, so MUPD and OPD are in constant communication and they also do joint patrols. I'm not sure if anybody is here from Oxford, so I certainly.
Chief Jones is here.
Okay. I can't see anybody else, so.
Yeah, I, this is Chief Jones. I I think I can answer that as far as MUPD. Uh so Chief McCandless and I uh have regular communications uh along with uh our operations staff and we've discussed how to approach this. Uh MUPD is going to take a more active role off-campus. Um and that's just being proactive and breaking parties up. But uh they also, they're, you know, one of the tactics is it, they will be our backup on these large parties where they can gather, help us gather information and report back. So we're, we're working uh closely with MUPD. But generally, the calls for off-campus were the primary responder for that.
All right, uh, I mean, let me get Mr. Snively and then I'll come back to you, Chantel.
Thanks. Um I I also want, I also want to thank both of you for coming and I I really appreciate it. And I appreciated the comment about uh some housing situations where there might be eight or ten people who live there. However, if it's a fraternity house, for example, if there are women on the porch, by definition, I I was a fraternity advisor. I know how that goes. So just wanted to say that. Um my other concern is that this not only be complaint-driven, but that there is some regular patrols that go out. And uh I've already had a number of uh full-year residents who uh have contacted me about parties on Vine Street and other areas. And I don't know how you patrol the entire community effectively, but uh there have been incidents and I hope that it's not solely complaint-driven. Um I also observed firsthand uh people lining up in the uh in the alley outside of CJ's. They completely blocked the alley from one side to the other and I have the video if anybody's interested. So I think there are, there are incidents going on that are um that are not good, let's put it that way. So I guess I'm asking whether this is simply complaint-driven or whether there will be some patrols going on and uh taking some affirmative action.
I I think from a police standpoint, it's it's, they're certainly proactive. I I would say most of our calls are self-initiated by the officer. Um but but we also respond to complaints, so um, you know, we we, you know, sometimes you've got three officers on duty and there are two of them are tied up at a domestic on, uh you know, out on the west side of the city. So um, you know, we're doing the best we can and um, you know, that's why we're relying on MUPD as well to uh help patrol um the mi- the mile square in particular, so.
I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
All right, Councillor Suthers had her hand up for a while.
Yeah, thank you. I want, I really appreciate this, all the collaborative work that's going on. Obviously, I think us, uh the public doesn't know about all this going on, so this is really wonderful. I really appreciate hearing all this and having it in a public forum. I um, some of the questions I was going to ask have been been asked, but I wanted to ask about um what methods you're using to educate uh the students now. For example, um how are you trying to to reach the students and educate them? Uh are you doing it online? Are you doing it in in um public? But you know, I just just wonder what methods are being used and how we can reach the students and educate them about why this is so important for the public health. Uh that was my first question and my second had to do with bars and restaurants and how that uh plays into uh what uh is happening. Um and I appreciate any any comments you can make on both of those subjects. Thank you.
I can talk about education. So uh it started with those webinars that I did. So those were an hour each and uh went through everything on our website so that they don't just read it, but hear about it in more depth. It was followed up by the video that I also talked about. Now, we launched just, I believe today, an education module that all students will have to take that explains what COVID is, what the symptoms are, why it is um why it's serious, how it's transmitted, how to keep yourself safe, as well as reiterating Miami's policies. We also do a lot of social media, so every single day, there is a social media post from Student Life about how to wear a mask properly, how to wash your hands properly, what physical distancing really looks like in real life, um how, why a cough spreads COVID and how far. So every single day, we're doing education through social media as well. We also did a meeting between all fraternity and sorority presidents and the Butler Department of uh Butler County Department of Health, which was really, really useful to be able to talk to all fraternity and sorority presidents about what the guidelines are. Ten people, whether it's inside or outside, with masks, with hazmat suits on your head, doesn't matter. Ten people is the limit. So we've been meeting with student organizations and other student leaders to spread the word as well. Oh, and then bars and restaurants. I'm not sure that I have, that I am the best person to talk about bars and restaurants. I think that that is probably more of a Oxford question in terms of the requirements that they are being held to.
Thank you.
All right, uh Councillor Pritrich.
So I guess um I would just um make a plea because I think that obviously it's really uncertain what will happen with Miami's campus. The odds are tough on being able to pull this off. Um but I think we know, I mean, and we know for a fact that we'll have six thousand plus students in town for the duration of the semester. Um and so I guess it's a plea that, you know, uh that so much is riding on this from Miami. Anything we can do to increase the odds of the in-person semester. Um I may be wrong, but I feel like the the off-campus is the dominant variable right now. Um and anything you can throw at it uh is is an investment worthwhile. Um and and but regardless of what happens with the semester, if even if if the hap- we have Miami has to remain online, um those students will still be here and perhaps with somewhat even less motivation to, because they will have lost that. And I will say, I, you know, I saw Mayor Smith and I were both driving around on Saturday night checking out the scene. Uh it was better than I thought it would be. Um, you know, and I think most people, with the exception of the Gray House on West Collins, were were, I didn't see any big parties. But what I saw was a recipe for a lot of COVID spread still. You know, I I get that people live in houses, but I saw a lot of mixed groups of people. Uh and and it told me that Miami students don't a hundred percent understand yet the consequences. So um there's not a lot of time to educate them. Um and Miami does such a good job on campus, creating student life and a culture. Uh I hope that all that can be applied as much as you can to the off-campus population for the sake of community health, for their health, um and also for the sake of Miami. Um there's not a lot of time. Um so but so I know you guys are really busy and just want to thank you. But again, it's just kind of a plea that if you have resources to focus off-campus, I would, I think it'd be an investment well spent.
Yeah, I mean, Kimberly and I both live in Oxford. We are residents here. We care about our community. We care about students. We have dedicated our lives to working with students and we know this is asking a lot of students. This goes against kind of the the normal developmental path of an eighteen and nineteen-year-old, which is to go out and explore new freedom and uh be in connection. And we need to find ways that they can still do that, but do that with smaller groups that are safer and understand that like many generations who have had to do things that are more difficult than planned, this is a time where they're going to have to pick up adult responsibilities sooner than expected. It doesn't mean that we don't want them to have a good time, but there's a way to do it responsibly.
So I guess then to follow on just is is that if if we can find a way to make this into something that's less about stick and and how can we enjoy this semester together? Um and you have incredible pro- programming. I don't know whether it's video gaming or something. We have to envision how this can be livable for everyone, everyone. So uh Miami's super creative in those regards too. So I hope you you you're able to deploy that. So thank you again.
Absolutely.
I I do want to just remind folks that so many of our students get this right. So many of our students are doing the right thing. Uptown is like a magnifying glass. And it's not all of our students who are uptown, even though it seems like a lot. There are thousands of students who are not up there and who are doing it right. And so it's really important to And so it's really important to remember that, that it's, it's usually the, the 10 to 20% who are, are challenging or pushing the boundaries and testing, which is, which is what they do developmentally. But I, I just don't want to lose track of, of the majority of our students who are doing the right thing, who are working with us, who are helping us come up with those creative ideas to stay engaged and to hold each other accountable and to, to find incentives, incentives to do the right thing, to, to, to find ways to, to share the carrot versus have to respond with the stick. And so I just, I know sometimes we get caught up in, in the trouble and the problems and the, and the fear. But I'm really proud of so many of our students who are doing the right thing and are being good citizens.
All right, I see Counselor Bracken's hand.
Two questions. I was wondering if there were additional consequences for Greek organizations. And I was also wondering about the turnaround on tests and then the tracing thereafter.
I'm sorry, I missed the first question about fraternities and sororities.
Sure. I was just wondering if there's additional consequences for sort of organized gatherings rather than random parties, but those associated with the associations and organizations like Greek life or otherwise.
So I, I am not a hundred percent sure about that answer. So we are meeting with fraternity and sorority presidents and advisors weekly. I mean, we're doing a lot of education and programming with them. What I'm not sure is through the code of student conduct. My assumption would be that if it was, if it was something that was organized by the fraternity rather than by individuals, that would be an organizational matter. But a, but a house of people who happen to be in a fraternity or sorority would be treated as individuals, just like any other student would. So I think that it is a difference between whether it is an organizational event or a personal event. I will say though, go ahead, Kimberly.
We can track, we can, we can track a case in two directions. So sometimes one case would have an organization that is have, is receiving the charge and also having individuals who are receiving individual charges. So we can actually track, track one incident by organization and by individual or, or one or the other. So we have lots of, we're, the, the process is nimble when it comes to student organizations and responsibility.
But I will add that national organizations and local advisors are all over this. That they are educating their students as much as we are at the same time as we are because the last thing they want to do is have their entire house get sick. So they're putting in their own requirements above it and beyond ours as well.
And one, one thing I want to share is that today, Butler County Health went through and did environmental scans of a number of fraternity houses so that they could provide advice on adjustments or changes or, or methods or preventative measures throughout the house for, for those individuals. And so that was something that our IFC president led in, in conjunction and partnership with Butler County Health to take preventative measures to set up the houses for success. So that's just a signal of, of good intention and work.
Sure. Would it be accurate to say if they did organize an event that broke these rules that they could potentially face suspension of their status in Greek life? And if that is accurate, are they aware that that's a possible consequence?
Yeah. So Jane mentioned earlier that we were on a panel with Butler County Health, so Jane, myself and Jenny Baylor, the Butler County Health Commissioner, we all were on a panel with all the Greek presidents from the three different councils. And we, we went into detail extensively about what is expected of them, the responsibility they have to lead and the consequences if they fall short. And so there's been concerted effort to work hand in hand to help them be successful versus responding just with accountability. So yes, is the answer to your first question. Could they face suspension? The answer is yes.
And I think the second question I had, thank you for answering all these. I know I'm just hitting you one after the other. But trying to get as much I can from the experts while I have that opportunity. So do we know what the turnaround is on testing?
So TriHealth is in the process of, we are waiting on the delivery of machines that will be a rapid test. So it would be, I believe, results in less than 30 minutes. Those will be used on symptomatic people. And then it will be a longer result for other types of testing that we may decide to do.
And do we know when they'll be delivered?
They're supposed to come this week. They've been on order for about six weeks. So we are hoping that they're going to arrive on schedule. But that is out of everybody's hands right now.
And do we feel pretty comfortable being able to trace off-campus after that? If we do get a, I guess right now that's only going to be used for symptomatic people. But should we get hold of a symptomatic person? Or do we feel comfortable being able to reach out to whatever events that they attended and the people who are connected to them there?
Contact tracing is being done by Butler County Health. So we're, if, if a positive test comes in, we work hand in hand with Butler County Health to share that information and then they, they pick up and do the contact tracing. I had a conversation today that gave me every indication that they are ready and able to do that.
Thank you.
All right, all right. I see Mr. Elby's hand raised.
Thanks, Mike. First off, I'd like to thank you for coming out and, and explaining all that stuff for us and especially fielding all these questions. I know that we're giving you the ringer on this. I have a question that I think you guys might enjoy as opposed to the previous ones that you've heard. Is there anything that the city can do to help you guys out with your debt?
Jane, I was waiting for you, but I can hop in there. Honestly, working with the city of Oxford and working with, with Oxford Police Department has been so, such a positive experience through all of this. Also, same thing with Butler County Health. I mean, we are all working in really true partnership and collaboration. It's, you know, it's been, it's been good. I've, I've been, I moved to Oxford and started this role just two years ago. And so I'm not saying that it wasn't good before, but you know, COVID has, has galvanized us in a way that, that has been heartening and helps me feel like we can, we can, we can do this together better because of the conversations that we're having and the intentionality that we have. So I don't know about more. So my response is would be to continue those open lines of conversation and, and dialogue with, with those two entities that are, that are just so instrumental in our success.
I wanted Kimberly to go first because I knew that she had been working more closely with the city and with OPD than I have. The, one of the thing that I would just say is if you have questions, ask. You know, don't, don't guess what we're doing, doing, don't assume what we're not doing. You know us now. So if, if things don't seem right or you're wondering what's happening, ask. We are very, very much interested in continuing the partnership and will always be happy to answer your questions.
Much appreciated.
All right. Anybody else?
Chantel.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Counselor. Give. Juggling the whole screen.
I understand. Just, just to clarify, you know, I'm, I'm sure y'all probably heard this a lot before, but just with previous consequences for Miami students with the whole three strikes rule and then it like rolls over or starts afresh again after the next semester. I know you've probably heard people say that it might not be the most effective way to punish someone or to like incentivize them to do the right thing. So I know that's not a new thing. And I think to echo what other people have been asking as far as whenever Bill asked what the consequences are and then David asked, okay, if they're suspended, then they're, they just have more free time off-campus. I think that there's some concern, I, I'll just on my part about what it means for the city to be creating a mass gathering ban and how truly effective that's going to be from the perspective of a student. Especially if maybe a thousand dollars isn't that much to them. And so whenever the biggest driving factor, someone is not taking COVID very seriously, which we all know those people are out there when it hasn't touched them yet. When you said that they might be suspended earlier and it's a case by case situation, I'm just curious, like, will, will, okay, so someone provides you a photo with a timestamp of someone who you know lives there and they're hosting a party. What will happen? They'll be suspended for a semester or, you know, what, what is that plan after?
So it's really important when it comes to accountability that you don't predetermine cases. So we believe in a fair and equitable process and, but if a student is found responsible, when, when we're talking about endangering health and safety of others, there are very serious consequences. And the, the lore in Oxford around accountability at Miami, there's a gap between reality and myth. The whole three strikes, all of that, that's not even accurate. And so the reality of it is, is a student earns their way out of Miami. If they make a choice that puts another person at risk, there is no other violation that we take more seriously. And so I can't, I'm not going to run scenarios. I'm not going to do the, the sort of what ifs speculation. What I'm saying is, is if a student is charged with endangering health and safety, we will look at all the facts of the case and, and make a decision. And if they are found responsible, they, they lose their right to be a student at Miami.
Period. Like they will be.
Well, no, not, not dismissal. It would have to be, we would have to weigh it out. Again, I am not going to speak in absolutes. It, it is a case by case situation. But if dismissal is certainly on the table with endangering and, and so is suspension. So I, I can't, I know you all want sort of these matter of fact situations, but it wouldn't be fair to our students to predetermine cases without evidence and a fair process.
And, and you don't have to answer this because I know you say you don't want to play through the scenarios. But I mean, I, I live smack dab in between two college houses and there's what, 10 kids on one side and then four on the other. So if a big party happens and we know that someone threw it, but no one admits to who did it, is that just, for example, that would be a, a wash? That we couldn't actually prove who threw the party?
No, I mean, if you were the person to witness it and you filed the report and you share the facts that you have and including an address, then we have ways to figure out who lives there and we would hold those individuals accountable for hosting an event that exceeded the 10-person expectation. And they would go through our process. And if they did that, that would be a problem and they would be facing suspension.
Okay. So all roommates, all housemates would be held accountable.
We have to, we have to have that information and we're doing our very best on, on gathering it and having access to knowing who lives, different addresses. But they don't get to play round robin. This time you get the citation, next time you get the citation. They don't get to do that. And then one address has 10 parties because there's 10 people that live there. And then they just take turns taking the citation. We're trying to, to stop that and, and we're working through that with the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, Counselor Bracken, one more question.
Sure. I, I was just wondering if we have a sense through, I know we have the pledge and, and we've talked about it. But I know there's been lots of surveys put out there. Do we have a sense that students really understand these consequences and are fully informed and, and really feel this as a, a potential threat?
Well, I just sent another email today to every student talking to them about how disappointed I was about the, the 19 parties over the weekend. I reiterated the fact that individuals who hosted those parties will be facing suspension. So every opportunity we have, we've been educating and communicating. What I, I just want to remind folks is that just like what seems like 50% of our country's population, our students don't all take COVID seriously. Miami's a microcosm of the larger society. And if you all can figure out how to get non-students to comply, I'll take, I'll take that advice. Because I will certainly apply it to our, our student population. What we can do is this, we can educate and educate again and, and sustain our commitment to communicating our expectations to these students and educate and empower our students to be successful, helping them know what it takes to be successful and doing that in a sustained manner. Then they have choices to make with that education and communication. They make choices, then we come back because we can respond to those choices. There is a limit between what we can do between after communication and education and responding. So our students do have to make independent choices, just like our non-student community members. And so we are doing everything we can to communicate, educate and respond accordingly.
Thank you. Yeah. And this might be an impossible task. I just feel that we need to do as much as we possibly can. So I just want to make sure that as you have all these protocols now in place to hold them accountable, the biggest thing is not to do it retroactively, but to make sure that they know that these consequences are coming. And so to prevent them from doing it in the first place. So I'm just checking up on that. And it's also the case that you might do everything that you can. But since we've had so many surveys for students and stuff, do we have a sense of how many have really taken that, that consequence in and not even just health-wise because they might be not so vulnerable? But in terms of these possible suspensions and everything, but it sounds like you're doing a pretty good job with that emails. So I appreciate that.
So I will also add, we, we will suspend and dismiss students. It is the last thing we want to do. The last thing we want to do is derail someone's education, derail their career. We know that every student that gets suspended is less likely to ever finish a degree here or anywhere else. So we're going to do everything we can to be proactive and educate before we want to try to enforce and sanction. I mean, we, we will put all the effort into making sure that people, that we're giving people the tools to make the right choice before we're jumping in and trying to change their lives by ending their education.
Sure. I don't think anybody wants to suspend students. I prefer we not suspend any of them, but we threaten them to the point that they actually take it seriously enough that they don't threaten other people's lives through COVID, right? So that's why I'm concentrating on not just how we actually implement that, but that they feel the threat. So they respond appropriately because as you've said, it's hard to control your impulses. And this is a normal developmental process at this age. It's going to be really hard to control their behaviors. And they'll put other people at risk. So we, we really have to do everything we can to try and mitigate that.
Yeah. And I also have to add, if you drove around this weekend, it wasn't just students. It was students with their parents who also are not taking this seriously because they think that this is an age that is at risk. So we're, we're also kind of combating family messages. As Kimberly said, it is a microcosm of how the rest of the country feels about all of this. And they are also walking around Oxford, watching permanent residents not always obeying all these rules either.
Sure. It's, it certainly is a microcosm and it's not just our college students. They're just more prone to it and they're more prone to socializing ways that they make the largest threat. So even if the vast majority of them are following the rules, which may or may not be the case, those that don't are going to have a hundred times more social connections than the average person in. person in town who lives here would. And that's what makes them particularly consequential and, and where the city goes and where the, the university goes. Thank you.
All right, thank you both so much. This has been incredibly helpful. Lots of people will see this either tonight through YouTube, whether they will watch this meeting. And we'll just continue to keep the lines of communication open. And if you need us for anything, again, don't hesitate to contact us, um, in any way you need to and we'll be happy to help. So again, thank you very much for tonight. We really appreciate it.
Thanks for having us.
Invitation.
Thanks.
Thanks, lady. You're welcome to jump off. Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, this brings us to public comments. Um, is there anyone out there who wishes to address counsel about items not on the agenda or on the consent agenda? Um, Ms. Green, is there anyone out there?
We have about, we have a few people, um, called in today and we have a hand raised with Mr. Humphrey. Mr. Humphrey, go ahead.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me? So hi, everyone. My name is Brandon Humphrey. I live at six zero nine Ogden Court. Uh, tonight I want to read you all a letter signed by the Diversity Interest Group in support of the policing reforms proposed by Black Lives Matter Oxford. Uh, the letter reads, Dear Mayor Smith, Vice Mayor Snively and other members of the Oxford City Council. We're the Diversity Interest Group, a group composed of graduate students from the Department of Psychology at Miami University. One of our fundamental values and missions is to help foster a healthy and inclusive environment for students, faculty and staff of all backgrounds. Although most of our work has been intra-departmental, we recognize that the health and wellbeing of our students, faculty and staff are affected not only by what happens within the psychology building, but also by what happens outside our doors in the broader Oxford community. With this understanding in mind, we express our support for the reform proposals presented to you by Black Lives Matter Oxford, Ohio. As scientists, we recognize the importance of thorough data collection and evidence-based solutions. As members of the Oxford community, we recognize the importance of a police department that is accountable to the community it is meant to serve. And as psychologists, we recognize the importance of accessible mental health and substance misuse treatment. We stand in solidarity with Black Lives Matter Oxford in urging you to enact these reforms to protect not only the marginalized members of our community, but indeed all members of our community. Together, we can make Oxford a better place for all. Sincerely, the Diversity Interest Group. That's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you.
Okay, we have, um, a Mr. Anderson. Go ahead.
Mr. Anderson? You still seem to be muted.
Okay, this is Debbie Anderson. I'm using my husband's email tonight. Um, thirty-nine oh three Harris Road. And I want to speak in support of the Oxford Police Department and specifically address some of the concerns from the Black Lives Matter letter that was read at the last meeting. But I just wanted to bring up three quick points before I do that. I just want to say that in our courts of law, we're innocent until proven guilty. So I don't want to see, um, our city responding to things that have happened in other cities unless in, in to accuse the police department of wrongdoing. Um, I would rather, um, see things like, questions like, how do they feel like they're doing with this? Um, do they feel like that there's any profiling that's going on? If they feel like they need to improve on that, let them come up with solutions. Let them determine, um, what they should do as a first step before there's things imposed on them. And then second of all, whenever, um, you're working with a group of people or in a business or workplace. Um, the most healthy work environment is where you self-correct. And so I would like to see that opportunity for the police department. If they feel like that there's things that they want to self-correct on, allow them time and opportunity to do that. That is healthy as, that is the most motivated way that you have your, your workers to produce good results. So, um, and also rather than applying something that worked in another city to our city. I think it's important to look at how many social work calls are there? You know, is it 20 out of 2,000 per year? Or is it 1,000 out of 2,000? If it's 20 out of 2,000 per year, then adding a social work element is probably not our best solution. But if it is something there is a need, then it's a time to collaborate. Just like Miami and, and the city police are collaborating on a situation with the students and COVID-19, then collaboration, I think, is the result. So I wanted to just go over those three points that they made. Um, one was comprehensive reporting. And having been a registered nurse, I know is it the best use of time and money to do things in detail? Does this show trust in the department? Um, it's tedious, it's doable. If they feel like that that is the best way for them to be most transparent to the community, then fine, but give them that option. And then the other one was to remove barriers to reporting police misconduct, like offering a business card with every encounter. We do live in an age of customer surveys. You can't go to a store or restaurant without getting that survey. Please fill out this survey. So I feel like there's an element of this that is positive. But the thing I dislike and I strongly dislike is they're only offering negative feedback. If you have a bad experience, this is how, how to deal with it. There's no opportunity, um, to say thank you. I, there's, you know, if you are helped in a car accident or a break in, or even you've locked yourself out of your car, you want to be able to have an avenue of thank you. So I think that to have a, a one-sided where it's critical comments only is not realistic in this day and age. I think we need to be more open for it to be an avenue of communication and relationship rather than just an avenue for complaints. And then the last one was again about, um, researching alternative, uh, funds to traditional policing. Um, I am a mom of a former police officer in a major city. And I can tell you from what I've heard that police, people do not call 911 for a counseling session. They call 911 because they feel threatened. And they feel like there's a situation that's too big for them to handle. And so you do need a police officer to settle the situation, to de-escalate it. And social services, counseling, um, homeless centers and so forth might be the next step. But I have friends that are social workers. And they call the police escort them when they go into a potentially volatile situation. So anyway, I just thank you for your time and consideration of these comments. I, uh, appreciate all the work that you're doing. Some are supposed to probably be a little bit more like Easy Street. And I know it's been just the opposite for all of you. So thank you for your efforts on behalf of the city and thank you for hearing my comments.
All right, thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Yep, um, Ms. Tran, go ahead.
Hi, good evening, everyone. This is Heidi Tran at three nineteen West Withrow Street. And I want to thank everybody. You guys asked amazing questions. I had them all and I would say them out loud and the next thing I knew, somebody was asking them. So thank you. Um, so like Jane said, there's a lot of missing pieces in our jigsaw puzzle and I'm really concerned about them. Um, I live in the Mall Square and I felt, unlike Jane was saying, I felt like the citizens of Oxford were pretty decent about walking around, social distancing and not being in crowds. And when you couldn't be away from somebody else wearing a mask. Um, that all has changed somewhere around midweek last week and, um, my world has changed. I feel almost like I'm on house arrest at, in my yard. And, um, beautiful bike trail, but to get there from here, I've got across hordes of people walking uptown with no masks on. They're not at a party, they're not at a residence, they don't have a mask. How do I report that? So what can we do? I feel like I could wear myself out trying to report this and the city could wear themselves out trying to enforce it. So I would love to see what, find an answer to how we can change the social pressure for Miami students to wear masks and to social distance. The parents weren't taking it seriously. They aren't taking it seriously. They think it's a joke. They think it's funny to breathe on people wearing masks. That happened to me and my husband the other night. Student walked by while we're wearing a mask and they walked up to us and breathed on us. So we've got to find a way to change the culture in this town. I don't know the answer, but I'm very happy to help. Um, and I want to put it out there to Miami and the city of Oxford to do that. And also I had a question about the people like Chantel was talking about, 10 in one house, four in the other. House of 10 has the party, the four go over there. Who all gets processed if they're all there, um, breaking their pledge and breaking their rules? Do the people who attend the party or just the people that host it? But once again, thanks, everybody. This is a tough problem. Um, but boy, it so needs a lot of help right now.
All right. Thank you.
I'm looking for some other names real quick. Let me see. Okay, I see, wait, um, if you want to speak, please press the green raise hand button. Um, Ms. Shaiman, I think I see your hand go up and down a few times. I'm going to unmute you just in case. Go ahead. Okay, maybe, maybe she didn't want to speak. I don't see any other hand raised at this time.
All right. Okay, then we will move on to the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Moved by Mr. Snively, second by Mr. Pritherick. Um, are there any items to be removed tonight? Seeing done, uh, Ms. Eaton, will you please call the role to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Prithridge? Yes. Ms. Regu? Mr. Snively?
Yes.
Ms. Southard?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken? Mr. Ellerby?
Yes.
Mr. Prithridge?
Yes, I thought you got me before.
Okay, Mayor Smith?
Yes. All right, we will move on to resolutions. Ms. Eaton, if you will read the first resolution whenever you're ready.
Resolution authorizing the purchase of two trailer-mounted solar-powered mobile message boards from All Traffic Solutions Incorporated, utilizing current government pricing at a cost not to exceed twenty-nine thousand, two fifty-nine, seventy-six.
All right, motion to adopt?
So move.
Moved by Mr. Savely, second.
Second.
Second by Counselor Southard. Staff, I don't know who's taking this. Mr. Dreisbach, are you taking this one?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Good evening, everyone. Uh, the city's had a need for this type of device for, uh, some time. Uh, we've been fortunate. We've worked with Miami and borrowed theirs in the past or we've borrowed from, uh, Emergency Management Agency. Uh, but as part of our education campaign to educate residents and visitors to the city of the mask coordinates in town. Uh, we would like to post these types of devices on all the state and federal routes coming into town. Uh, but we are at the mercy of, of rental companies or our partners. And, uh, as of today, none are available to borrow. Uh, so we're able to use CARES Act money, uh, to purchase two of these devices. Uh, what we're proposing are twins to, uh, the same model that Miami uses. Uh, so that we can partner with each other when necessary. They use the same control systems and I think will complement each other very well. Uh, in addition to providing, uh, messages, they also uh, will be equipped with radar so we can remind drivers of their speeds. And, uh, we also have a slightly better price than what we first, uh, proposed in the supplemental budget. Initially, we proposed thirty-one thousand, five seventy for two units. Uh, but we found this on a federal GSA contract, so we may purchase two of these for twenty-nine, two fifty-nine point seven six. So I'll be glad to answer any questions.
All right, uh, Mrs. Green, is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution?
Let me check. I do not see any hands.
All right, uh, council discussion questions? Uh, I see, uh, Council Regu's hand up.
Maybe this money is coming out of the CARES money? And I, if, if that is true, I'm trying to figure out how that is justified. And I, I, I have a really big problem with that. I mean, whenever we have people who, this could be going towards helping for evictions and rent assistance and food and schools, true problems related to COVID. I'm trying to understand the rationale. And I understand you can, you're probably going to squeak out something that is remotely associated with it. But this, that, I don't know, that just seems a little odd.
Well, my understanding is we have X dollars allotted to the city and, uh, this is an eligible expense for educating the public about COVID and city requirements for masking. So that's our rationale for proceeding.
And Chantel, I might add that, uh, we've been in contact with our social service agencies. You know, after we transferred the five thousand, uh, to the Family Resource Center. Uh, Sam has communicated with them about the need for further dollars. And so, uh, you know, when they express that need, uh, we'll put something together, uh, that would more than likely come out of this, but we just can't transfer, uh, the money. We have certain, uh, requirements that we have to meet. And I think I shared with you, you know, our goal is to meet our community needs and not turn back any dollars to the federal government. But we do have, uh, some, some requirements. Obviously, we can't use it to replace revenue. Uh, but, you know, I understand this may seem a bit frivolous, but, you know, I think messaging is very important for us. You know, to get the, the, the message to the folks that come in. I mean, I can share with you that I talked to, uh, some folks that were not from here, from New York. They were not aware that we have a requirement to wear a mask here. And, uh, certainly I let them know immediately. And, uh, they, fortunately, they had some masks, just didn't have them on. And I said, well, look, I can't talk to you unless you put your mask on. You know, I'm the city manager and we have this requirement. So I understand this may seem frivolous in the big scheme of things, but, uh, you know, we are in communication with our social service agencies. You'll see that we also have on the agenda, uh, giving a thousand dollars to the, uh, senior center to help them with their telephone system, which is a, a capital expense, but it's, it's an allowable expense. So, uh, you know, this is just one item, but I understand where you're coming from.
Thirty thousand dollars for messaging is, is quite a bit. Um, so I, I, I'm just thinking about how much our school system is struggling. And I mean, just last meeting, I thought a lot about whenever I asked, you know, what does, what does Ms. Baylor think about when the, our local health department think about, um, what we are proposing whenever it's having this COVID discussion? And your response was that they're, they're stretched pretty thin and they don't have a lot of staffing. So I can think about all different types of things like pop-up COVID testing, funding for contact tracers, things that actually relate to helping with an infectious state, um, and thirty thousand dollars. In my frugal heart, it's a lot of money for messaging. Um, whenever it doesn't directly relate to someone's either economic health or their, their physical health. Um, and I think a lot of small businesses are struggling too. Thirty thousand dollars is sure a lot of money. So I, I really struggle with using the CARES funding for this.
Okay.
All right, Counsel Prithridge?
So I guess, um, just in, in the broad scheme of things, I don't know. Uh, I, I would love for the CARES dollars, given that it's a finite amount of money. I mean, one could imagine having a conversation about what the priorities would be for such a pool of money. So we can weigh different things against each other. Um, and. And, you know, I guess the fear is, is, is not fear, but that you spend on one thing and it's just, I mean, it is not a huge amount of money, but one, it could be potentially very impactful. So I guess if there could be an opportunity and I don't know whether it's part of our budget cycle where we could just talk about like, this is the pie, how much will we like to give rather than have incremental asks? I just, it would help me judge these things. I mean, from that point of view, I totally get where Counselor Ragoo is coming from. It's hard for me to weigh against how it could be spent in other ways because I don't know what the criteria are. I myself am a person who I would love the money to be an investment in something that lasts beyond just getting through. So, you know, if, if we can have infrastructure, for example, that we would use for other things in the future, whether they're immediately COVID-related or we could use them for other public health or public safety things, like one can make that argument for this, these messaging boards. So I'm not, you know, I, I, I'm kind of com- comfortable with it, but I've, but again, and what, I'm not sure what else we could be doing with money and that's a little tough for me. So that's just, so thank you.
I see Mr. Newland's hand up.
Yes, I, I've attended so many webinars on the funding and how you can use it. And some cities are doing, a little small town somewhere in Southern Ohio is doing COVID testing for all full-time residents. And, I mean, that's, that's an option, but just like they said in the the Miami is, yeah, everybody can go get tested, but is that really going to help the, the city out or in the big scheme of things? I mean, we could set money aside for that, but we've got till October fifteenth to figure it out because at that point, I've got to return the money to the county treasurer.
All right, let me go to Mr. Bracken and then we'll go to Counselor Ragoo and then to Counselor Ellerby.
Yeah, I want to echo David's concerns. I feel like this is definitely an area where it should be brought to council to help prioritize and direct as opposed to get incremental asks along the way, especially if there's a time limit on it and especially if we're in a pandemic and things need to be acted on sooner rather than later. And, you know, just offhand, we should be given options in terms of, like, these signs make sense, prevention makes sense, it can do the most good, but wouldn't it be possible to purchase signs that direct that message and still have tens of thousands of dollars left over potentially for something else? We shouldn't just be considering this one thing now being brought to us. We should be directing it to go ahead. And I'd also, actually, this goes back to our earlier presentation with Miami. We talked about how, you know, if you get tested one day, that doesn't mean the next day you're not sick, even though you tested negative the day before. That doesn't mean there's no value because if you do get sick and it registers, then you know that you have to quarantine at that point, right? There's huge value to that. Just because you might get sick the next day doesn't mean testing is useless. It's incredibly important, especially if the turnaround time is very, very short because then you'll really reduce your impact of spread thereafter. So I'm, I'm definitely interested in, in looking at the different options.
All right, Counselor Ragoo?
Bill can talk first.
Okay, well, let me go to Counselor Ellerby, his hand up first.
Yeah, I actually agree with the expenditure and with the use of the CAREF funds and here is my rationale behind this decision. It is an investment in the city and it's one of communication investment and that has been sorely lacking in the city over the years. Now, in the past couple of years, it has improved dramatically. So any kind of expenditure or investment that I see improving communication with Oxford is a big win in my book. Plus, right now, we have a large population of individuals that have not been keeping track of all the efforts that we've done during the summer to try to prevent a lot of this spread. So one of the biggest arguments that I've seen is, I didn't know you guys had this stuff. Or I didn't know this, or I didn't know dot, dot, dot. And any efforts that we can use to prevent those kinds of defenses and behavior, I'm all for. Finally, these things will persist after this pandemic is over and we can use them in more than one fashion than just this particular thing, which I believe is a tremendous benefit for an investment in some dollars that we're being provided. That's pretty much it.
All right, Mr. Snively?
Well, I definitely agree with Counselor Ragoo's concerns. I understand them, but I have to agree on this one with Counselor Ellerby because I, I think communication's really essential and you gotta get them. You gotta find some way to get the message across, the banner across the street, you know, on High Street, that helps. And I think that Glenn is right, that it's something that we will use in the future and we don't know how many times we may really be glad that we have that. Having said that, I would like to look at other options afterwards that we can use that might have more social impact.
All right, Counselor Sutherd?
I think it's, it's more than, I mean, we are talking about the communication and communicating to the public, which I think is essential, but one of the things that people are, are asking is how are we going to enforce this ordinance, this mask ordinance? Well, you know, if we, if we educate people that this is an ordinance that we have passed, that will save time and, and resources of other that, that come from other places such as police time, police maybe antagonistic encounters. So it has ramifications that go beyond simply letting people know, you know, simply about their safety. It has ramifications for our whole community and expressing something about, about what we're trying to achieve here. So I think it's actually a good idea and since we have to return the money, you know, lose, use it or lose it. We also have a COVID fund at the Oxford Community Foundation and I don't know currently how much is in it. Does anybody know? So that we would know how much is there that can be used for other, other kinds of social service issue. Does anybody know? I, I don't know how much is in that fund. But I, I think it's, it's growing. I mean, I think people are contributing to the Oxford Community Foundation's COVID fund and that is something that anybody can do, contribute to that, and that is something that would be very useful for people to to, because we here at Oxford, our tax dollars are, you know, seriously cut because of financial issues, so I think that this is a good use of the, of the funds.
Back to Counselor Ragoo.
I, I, I would propose to have a work session and including town members and students and actual other people in trying to figure out how we're going to spend the CARES money. I mean, we need to be really prioritizing the people who are suffering the most from this. This is what this money is intended for. And I don't know about you, what CDC protocols you're reading or Ohio Health Department protocols you're reading, but I didn't see anywhere in there about thirty thousand dollars for signs along the street. So I could imagine all of us could figure out a cheaper way to communicate. I, I was curious that, you know, Jane and I can't remember the other person's name. Dr. Moore did not mention also purchasing signs like this. You're acting like this is the only way we can communicate. So I think thirty thousand dollars is a lot. I think we should have a work session that involves people that are actually struggling from COVID. They're at risk of losing their, their jobs and their homes. This is what this money is meant for and also roping in small businesses, so I think that that should be done first before we allocate any money because I could imagine there's a lot, heck of a lot of people out there that could do a lot with thirty thousand dollars.
Here, see, let me get Mr. Dreisbach first. Mr. Dreisbach?
Just to give counsel an idea of what this, the ratio of this expense to the pot of money. This is about seven or eight percent of the available funds. And perhaps Mr. Newland can confirm that for me. So I wanted to give you some perspective of this expenses and also to let you know that Ms. Green is working with Miami and Butler County. And this is just one aspect of a education campaign. They're planning on banners to go along streetlight poles on High Street and other areas, so this is one aspect of getting the message out about our face covering ordinance.
Good answer to Counselor Pritherich.
So, yeah, I mean, I just think, Mike, for example, knowing how big the pot is, what percentage of the pot is, that's just context that helps us. So I, I mean, I, I think I'm with Counselor Ragoo that in general, I, I would love, for example, to see a proposal for how are we going to spend every last penny of this? And it could just be a draft list and I don't know whether that has to be part of our budgetary process and I, I don't, you know, this is an administrative thing of how the city spends money, but I think that as counselors, we, whether they're ideas, I just think it might be nice to see a draft budget of how we intend to spend it wisely. I can imagine other things too that I hope that it gets used for. I, I would though advocate that some things I think could, we could afford a little bit of time. I happen to think that the communications about the behaviors with the off-campus students, man, I can't imagine a time when there's been so much money and jobs riding on what happens in the next seven days. You know, I think layoff, layoffs and furloughs at Miami could follow one super-spreader event. So to me, I think that if we can purchase this thing and communicate, I think, and it's only seven percent of the budget, then let's talk about what to do with the rest of it. So anyway, that's my, my take.
All right, back to, let me, let me get Counselor Ragoo and then we'll come back to you, Mr. Elliott.
I, I mean, I know that everyone here makes more than thirty thousand dollars and so that doesn't seem like a lot of money. It doesn't seem like a lot of money. And whenever you're looking at half a million dollars, your budget is lots of millions of dollars, but that's a lot of money to an individual family, multiple families, a small business. So I think that of utmost importance is not only what council thinks should happen with the CARES money, but what the people who are actually struggling have to say. So I think that we need to do better about actually including people who elected us and allow your salaries to be paid to make decisions on this money.
Come back to Mr. Elliott.
I just wanted to share with you that, you know, this has been a moving part. As you know, the Congress is talking about a second package and they can't come to an agreement on things. But, you know, we're not sitting by idly. For example, one thing that we thought we could do is reimburse the city's general fund for the two hundred thousand dollars that we transferred to the CIC, which was to help our businesses with the gift card program. And unfortunately, it appears that's not a possibility. So yes, there will be substantial sums of money. We'll generate some ideas and we can probably post a survey about ideas and, and, you know, put in some some of the limiting factors in there, but, you know, this is a, a fluid situation and we're trying to do the best we can and we've got a lot of other things that council is asking us to do, so I appreciate that. Staff came up with this idea. It seemed like a good way to communicate and but, but I understand where you're coming from. There are a lot of people out there still struggling.
I just want to say I had to travel last week and everywhere I went, the signs were, were prevalent. Every, every town I went to, every state I traveled through, so there was no doubt that there was a mask ordinance everywhere I went, so I don't want to give any of this money back either, so we'll get some ideas together and figure out what we can do with it, so. There's no more discussion. I'll ask Ms. Eaton to call the roll.
Ms. Ragoo?
No.
Mr. Snively?
Yes.
Ms. Sutherd?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Ellerby?
Yes.
Mr. Pritherich?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes. That resolution is adopted. We move on to our second resolution. Ms. Eaton, you may read that whenever you're ready.
A resolution authorizing the donation of one thousand dollars to Oxford Seniors as a subrecipient of federal CARES Act funds to assist with the purchase of a new phone system for the senior center facility.
Motion to adopt.
Adoption.
Move adoption, Mr. Snively, second.
Seconded.
Second by Counselor Sutherd. Mr. Elliott, are you going to take this one?
Oh, I, I'll let Mr. Newland handle this one.
Mr. Newland?
Oh, yeah, in May, Mr. Schnebel contacted City Manager Elliott concerning the city's portion of CARES funding possibly being available to assist with unexpected purchases, purchase of a new phone system at Senior Center. Mr. Schnebel followed up by email on July twenty-first to City Manager Elliott. By July twenty-third, it was determined that the request could be funded by granting CARES funds the city received on July sixteenth to the Senior Center. Following the best practices for grant funding from recipients of federal government sends to the city, they sent a questionnaire from the Association of Government Accounts. This questionnaire determines if the recipient is a classified as a subrecipient, which is a non-federal entity that receives the subaward for purposes of carrying out part of the federal award. The subrecipient creates a federal assistance relationship with the subrec- subrecipient. Or a contractor, which is a non-federal entity that receives a contract for the purposes of providing goods and services for the awarding non-federal entities own use. Contract creates a procurement relationship with the contractor. I also asked Mr. Schnebel to send a letter stating why he believed that the, his request was related to COVID nineteen. And in the, his response, which was Exhibit AI, he points out that the governor's orders issued in the March, March Oxford seniors remain open as an essential service by the state designation specifically to provide meals on wheels and senior transportation. The phone system began to fail in May and was replaced in June and the system was an unbudgeted item and was essential to provide services. That said, the recommendation is ask council for the support of this donation to the senior center using CARES Act funds.
Mrs. Green, is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution?
I do not see any hands up.
Right. We will go to council discussion. Does everybody kind of follow that to kind of sum up, you know, the, the senior center had essential resources to do with Meals on Wheels and their antiquated phone system, which we were responsible for through the, through the building began to fail, so so we went ahead and, and replaced it, so. And I see Counselor Sutherd's hand.
I think this is good use of the money. I, I, the, the Meals on Wheels program is, is essential to keep a, a lot of elderly people in their own homes and they need a phone system to keep it working, so I, I think this is an excellent project. Especially with the senior center closed, you know, they need ways to reach out to people, so I'm, I'm, I'm for this use of funds.
Call the question.
All right, Ms. Eaton, you may call the roll.
Mr. Snively?
Yes.
Ms. Sutherd?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Ellerby?
Yes.
Mr. Pritherich?
Yes.
Ms. Ragoo? Mayor Smith?
Yes. All right, resolution is adopted. We'll move on to ordinances. We have one first reading under emergency and Ms. Eaton, you may read that whenever you're ready.
Ordinance prohibiting mass gatherings of more than ten non-household members within the city of Oxford, Ohio to limit the spread of COVID nineteen and declaring an emergency.
Motion to adopt as an emergency. I see Mr. Pritherich, second, second by Mr. Snively. All right. We will go to city staff.
Let me start off here. This was at the request of council, especially Counselor Pritherich. And so we worked with Ben to put together the ordinance that's in the packet. You did receive a You did receive a, a comment tonight, uh, from, uh, Kim Paterka. I believe she also indicated that it was submitted by not only her, but Leanne Shoker, two owners of uptown bars. And they pointed out in their, uh, letter, or excuse me, their, uh, comments to council that they felt that we needed to include, uh, bars and restaurants in the exclusion. And then Ben basically also felt that we needed to include, uh, other exemptions, for example, sporting events. So we sent out this evening a replacement ordinance, and I hope you've had a chance to take a look at it. But that's sort of the history of what we have here tonight. And I'll turn it over to, uh, Councilor Prithridge, or maybe Chris wants to add something to what I've added tonight.
I defer to Chris. I know I can comment whenever after we've heard public comments.
All right, Mrs. Green, is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution?
Yes, there are a few hands raised. I saw Mr. Fisher first, so Mr. Fisher, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks to Lee Fisher, 88 Whitetail Run. I understand the logic and the reasons behind this, but I'm more concerned about how this ordinance gets lifted or suspended so that we don't start imposing on people gathering when there is no crisis. And second question is, who, who makes that determination about when an ordinance is suspended or lifted in this case? In what case would this be with this ordinance?
I can answer that. Council has the authority to suspend their rules of two readings, and they can also ask that an ordinance be passed as an emergency. And then Lee, the question that you asked about how long it would remain in effect, as it's written in Section 5, it says that it shall remain in effect during the pendency of the State of Ohio Executive Order 2020 hyphen 01D. And that's the governor's, uh, order, uh, that he, I believe, made in March, the emergency.
So Doug, does that automatically mean that when the governor lifts that order, that this ordinance is lifted?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Ms. Shamen. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you. Amy Shamen, 11 Heather Ridge Court, speaking on behalf of myself and my husband, Jason, speaking on, in favor of this ordinance. We have a, a lot of need in our community to be able to have our community function and have our university be able to be in session and avoid the layoffs and furloughs that have already been mentioned, avoid the system, the unfortunate situation the school district discussed yesterday, and, um, protect, most importantly, everyone's health and safety. There has been a lot of really valuable communication tonight about communication and how information is shared. And we would like to suggest that, um, the city, perhaps Jessica and her, and, and her coworkers, consider utilizing students to help spread this message. We know developmentally, our college-age students are not necessarily looking to be rule compliant all the time. But perhaps if they have an opportunity to hear this message from one another, they're hearing a lot of great information from Dr. Brunel and Dr. Moore, as we heard earlier tonight. Perhaps if they could hear some of this information through social media, Instagram, WhatsApp, all the WeChat, all the ways that they communicate, um, that that could help this information feel more adoptable by them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Looking for a few other hands. Um. I do not see any other hands raised at this time.
Okay. Then let's move on to council discussion.
So could I jump in here? I, I want to start with thanks to staff for acting so quickly, um, based on our conversation. And I think that ordinance mirrors the kind of, addresses many of the concerns that we had, and we don't need to repeat that conversation. But I guess I would say that, um, the stakes couldn't be higher for Oxford and our, and our key employer, Miami University, um, to contain COVID, and the stakes couldn't be higher for the public health. And, uh, while I appreciate that great efforts have gone into trying to communicate through webinars and emails, I think that this is a time where communication, the idea needs to be crystal clear, and there can be no ambiguity about what people should be doing and not doing. And if you go on the, you know, Help Miami Healthy, Safe Together website, and you burrow in there, and eventually you get to the off-campus students, and then it says, "To follow this, go to CDC recommendations." And then you're on another webpage with 10,000 words on it. It's not clear. So, so to me, then this, I really appreciate that. I think we have existing rules to help, you know, after the fact, as, as Mr. Bracken, Councilor Bracken mentioned, but this law's primary value is communicating ahead of time what the expectation is. So I appreciate it. I, I think that I, I would love to talk a little bit more about some of the changes, just so we make sure what this addresses, because I think the governor's orders cover most of the other things that people are concerned about, bars, restaurants, like. So this is not meant to interfere or supersede with other things. This is really about individuals hosting gatherings primarily at their home, but other places. So as long as we can carve that out and make that specific, I think we need an ordinance to do that. So thank you.
All right, I've got, uh, Mr. Snively, then Councilor Sutherd.
Do we need a motion to substitute? Or was that a friendly amendment? If we need a motion to substitute, I would make that motion, because I think those were good changes.
Yeah, so I, I, I don't, I didn't move the initial thing, but if I, yeah. It's a person who called for the legislation, it does seem like a friendly amendment.
As the seconder, I also view it as a friendly amendment.
Councilor Sutherd.
Yeah, I mean, I, we wish that this were not necessary, but it clearly is necessary to, to have this ordinance. And I'm, I'm, I really appreciate the, um, quick action on the part of the city staff and our legal, uh, advisors to make this, this happen. I am concerned about the exemption of restaurants and bars. I understand the thinking about that, but, um, I, I'm concerned about that. I'm also, yeah, I, you know, one of the amendments is, uh, exempting athletic and sporting events, including recreational and sports and club sports. And, um, that is, it's also something maybe we should discuss. And I'd like to, to know more about the, the rationale for that. So that's both a statement and a question.
All right, uh, Mr. Kennard.
Well, as we've frequently discovered, uh, with things related to, uh, the response to the pandemic, that, uh, things can change from day to day. Uh, and today in the governor's, uh, press conference, he announced, uh, some changes that, uh, we felt had a, an impact. We felt that restaurants and bars needed to put in an exempt status, because, um, I don't think that there was an intent to stop, um, patrons from going to the business establishments if there were proper social protocols, distancing, et cetera, et cetera. So we felt that that clarified it. The governor's order does, uh, contemplate that people can participate in recreational activities without mask wearing. Um, and certainly that would apply to, uh, rules that may be set forth by, uh, the state and the athletic associations for high school athletes. We don't know, given the fact that the, the MAC has, uh, canceled fall sports, what that will mean for university club sports and other recreational sports. But we've, we've kind of felt that this, for purposes of discussions and recommendations to council, that, um, that participants would follow the guidelines set forth in, in the state for participation in those athletic events. The last thing that I would note is in subsection G, we added the word sanctioned, uh, to community events, which I think needed to get, needed to be there to give some guidance that this just couldn't be done without some protocol or, uh, permitted, uh, gathering. The last thing I'll add is, is that, uh, that, that the first person to ask the question about when the, uh, when the, the ordinance would, would terminate, uh, I, I agree with, uh, Mr. Elliott that it, it would at the earliest possible date. But I also want to add that, that much of what the Oxford Council has been doing, the staff, the city, many communities throughout Ohio and the country have just been trying to apply principles of common sense, um, and do the best that we can when there's no, it's like the first time you have a, a child. There's no, there's no handbook on how to be a parent. You, you, you figure it out. We ask that the, the citizens of Oxford, uh, trust that there's a thoughtful process. Uh, I've said to at least one council, uh, member that, uh, I, I don't think that the ordinance is necessarily perfect, because I don't know what perfect is in this situation. We, we do our best to keep people safe, and we, and we go with that. So I'm sorry for that little, uh, policy statement, but, um, I would not be offended if council opted to take some of that language out, but we put it in there for purposes of the discussion.
All right, Mr. Prithric.
So here is just a question for Mr. Connor, which is, um, we've carved out exemptions, but partly, Mike, my thinking was, when we went into this, is that there are currently gubernatorial orders that cover bars, restaurants, sporting events. There are all these other orders for which there's some. So I guess to me, is it simpler in a way to just, you know, say this, this order shall not supersede existing gubernatorial orders related to businesses or whatever, and not necessarily do the, the exemptions and carve-outs? So, you know, and, and maybe that's, I, I think this does the job, but I guess partly is just even to communicate that we're not sanctioning bars because we think it's fine. There are other rules that will take care of that. So, uh, so, yeah, to me, just, I guess the logic was, you know, if you could explain the logic a little bit of why maybe we don't just say this is only applies to this, but then we cross-reference everything else and all those other orders that are going to govern the sporting events anyway.
I, yes, I, I, I agree with what you say. Uh, I will say, though, that there might be a, a higher, maybe not much, but potentially a higher probability that someone might look at the Oxford ordinance in terms of the local impact. Um, I don't know that too many people who are actively going out to see what the governor's orders or the Department of Health's orders are saying. While I think that the, the, there are good summaries of what they say, I'll tell you, sometimes when you go in and read those things, they are at hard times, hard to decipher. And since they build on each other, sometimes things are left five, five sequences behind, and, and it's tough to figure out. Uh, last weekend, there was a long exchange among Ohio municipal attorneys trying to figure out how movie theaters could open, because it was just not clear, and no one could, could trace the lineage of, of the orders. So I, I would defer to council. Uh, I, I don't think that there's a, I, I would agree with your, your rationale. I, I think that, uh, we could craft the ordinance in such a way that it would be, uh, referred to incorporated by reference with the governor's orders, if that's what you chose to do.
Mr. Bracken, wait, let me, let me get, jump in, give Mr. Elliott first.
I just wanted to say, basically, you know, we're still going to be enforcing the nuisance party ordinance. And I think that was the focus, whereas the large gatherings, for example, students that are exceeding 10 or, you know, more than their household group, will still be utilizing that. And quite frankly, as you know, from the last council meeting, we kind of felt that this wasn't necessary. So, you know, I, I think it, as David said, I mean, it'll be clear now that we're talking about, you can't have more than 10 people. So it's somewhat symbolic, but we're going to still use our existing, uh, framework, the police department, and, and, you know, pass that information on to Miami University. So, uh, you know, because this does have a hefty fine with it. It's a $500 fine for the first-time violation, a thousand for the second. And so, you know, with everything I think we're doing, we're hoping that we can educate the public, and we can avoid having to, to enforce these penalties. But, you know, if we have to, we will.
Let me get, uh, Councilor Bracken, and then we'll come back to Council Raghu. Okay.
Yeah, so again, I mean, uh, this is, this is mostly a prevention strategy, even if we actually didn't implement it on anyone. The threat of it needs to be there, and when we feel it's warranted, we can then apply it. And with that being said, I think it should start way higher than $500. If you do simple math on the average size of a party that occurs, $500 is nothing. In fact, $1,000 is nothing. They often spend that amount of money individually uptown on any given night. Um, and so, as Bill mentioned before, at parties, they could pass around a hat and pay that off very quickly, and so it's not that much of a, a threat to them. I think it should start at like $2,000, and the second one would be like 5,000. And hopefully, we don't need to use it, because it actually prevents some of those parties. But if we do, they will feel it, and it won't happen again, hopefully. Um, I will caution, though, as we mentioned at previous council meetings, that if this does have the effect of not just reducing parties overall, but shifting the parties indoors, that would actually make it worse. So if we are going to do this, and it has an effect, we have to make sure that we hold them accountable in indoor parties, which I know is harder, because you can't see how many people are in there. I know that you, you, you pay more attention to the outdoor parties, because you can hear them, and you can see them, and it'd be harder for indoor. But if the effect is to push them indoors, it will be worse. But I feel that this is a good direction, and that we need to use this as a threat to, to get some cooperation. I would love if there were more carrots available, but I don't think there are. I think even if we provided things, it, it wouldn't meet the qualifications for many of the social nights that college students are often looking for, which often involves drinking and other stuff. And so I think we need to go the route of, of consequences, serious consequences that they, they need to take seriously.
Council Raghu, do you still have a question?
Yeah, I have a few comments. And, you know, Jason had mentioned this before, as far as simulators, to try to figure out what are the probabilities and how different policies will affect, um, infection rate. And I don't know if y'all have heard of this, but there's a website called covidactnow.org, and it's a simulator, um, that you can use. And it, it plays into, um, what type of policies are in place? So you can try to figure out what the infectious rate would be. And then you can also look up, um, they have all this data congregated about what percentage of, like, bed space, for example, is at ICU. Like, they have all this information kind of documented. So I would be really curious, um, if someone wanted to run this simulator to see what this, how this policy would play a role, um, so we can try to be as objective as possible. The other comment would be, uh, would there be any interest in making exemption for related family members? I mean, people have, I don't know if everyone on here has a huge extended family, but, um, I happen to be a part of one. And so that would mean that two siblings and their families really could not meet up anymore. So that would be, I, I think that to consider what that would mean for related family members. And the other thing too, that I struggle with, um, just as a comment, it's hard, because I, I get that bars and restaurants, I totally get why there's exemptions there. But we know infections can be traced to bars and restaurants and, and parties. So I, a part of this is very, um, I see the hypocrisy, and I see the holes in it, because I know this is intended for just students and not necessarily for community members. Um, and it's also meant to not punish restaurants and bars when we know all those infections are still happening. So I kind of struggle with the whole part of it, but, um, I, yeah. So I, I wish that there was, like, like Chris was saying, this isn't, this isn't perfect policy, but the intention is to try to be as safe, um, for public health, and, which I get that. I just think that there's, there's maybe some, if we can have an objective measure as to what this policy would do for the city of Oxford, that would be, that would be really helpful for a vote.
All right, I see Councilor Snively's hand.
You know, I, I understand, uh, Council Raghu's point. I think part of the problem is that some of the largest outbreaks began at family events, at reunions and weddings and funerals. So, you know, I, I think even if they're related, if they don't live in the household, if you're having a, a 50-person family reunion. a 50-person family reunion, that's probably a problem until this is over. So I kind of like it the way it's written, although I understand your point.
All right. Counselor Prithrid, I see your hand.
Yeah, I guess it's, I mean, because that was, the governor's order talks about non-family social gatherings. And so the governor's order kind of exempts those, those things. And, and for the, for the reasons Counselor Raghu mentions, I mean, that's hard to do. I, I guess, I guess I come back to the idea that this number, the CDC came up with it for epidemiological reasons. And yeah, that's the thing that I've been thinking about COVID doesn't care about you and who you're related to and why you're there. And I'm assuming the CDC came up with that number because it was the best number from a, a spread point of view. So I guess whatever you could model it, all we're really doing is codifying what the existing expectations are at the federal and state level. So, yeah, I don't know. This is great, but it's, we're basically just having an enforceable way to enforce what already should be the expectation. But I think it's not clearly understandable to people. So, yeah, I think it's imperfect. I think I could tinker with this, but I think it gets, it would get the job done. And, and one of the primary reasons I think is good is Counselor Ellerby asked the question, how can we help you to Miami? I can't imagine, this couldn't help them. If someone gets cited with violating the party ordinance and you have it tied to the host, that's got to help in the disciplinary procedures. In with or alongside or with the nuisance party ordinance, I think it just a clear chain of command or whatever you want to call it. So anyway, it's imperfect. I, I wrestle with this because it should apply to everyone across the community and that includes me and my neighbors. But you know, if we get together in larger groups, something doesn't feel right anyway. So I think for the near, near term, we just have to do what we can. So thank you again.
All right. See Counselor Brackett's hand.
Yeah. So the thing we ought to concentrate most on after this, if should this go into effect, is advertising it. We should plaster the town with this threat. And, and I think, again, I would suggest making it higher than what it is by a good amount. Even if we didn't enforce it after that, even though I think there's certainly cases where we would want to, that message needs to be clear. And I think that should really be considered going forward.
Well, could I ask Chief Jones, is there any reason this couldn't be cited alongside the nuisance party ordinance, which you've already said has better precedent value and stands up in court? You know, what happens if you get to a big party? Can you cite someone for this and nuisance party? And then what's a student looking at?
Chief?
Yeah, we could, we could also cite under this and it again, just will add to that fine. Typically the nuisance party, you're already citing them with maybe litter noise and maybe have arrested someone underage and then you're adding this on. So it, it could be, I think it's a tool that I've seen officers already using by talking about just educating when they walk up to the party. They're typically only given a litter ticket, but then they're, they're mentioning the governor's order and then city councils got a local ordinance about the 10-person gathering. So I watched body cam footage from that, from the weekend. So again, I think it's a more of a preventative tool and I honestly don't want to use it. I don't want to cite it and then it be ruled, you know, found against us. I would rather use existing stuff, but if we have to use this, then we'll use this. I don't know if that makes sense, but and you know, and again, the the law director could weigh in, but I, I just know in a criminal court, this wouldn't hold up because I've had stuff much more clear to me thrown out based on different things, but this is a civil ordinance. So, you know, we'll see. But like I said, I, I just, we like to use things we know will work. And if we're already issuing a nuisance party citation, I think along with the other tickets, that'll work, but we can also, you know, add this on.
Counselor Brackett.
Yeah. Could our, our law professionals speak to that at all? I'd appreciate it.
Speak to the discretion of the charging or how a court might interpret the civil penalty?
All of it. Again, I actually agree with Chief Jones that I, I hope we wouldn't have to use this, that we would only use it as a threat. But should we have to make good on it under different circumstances, how would it hold up, do you think?
Well, I, I think that, so the question is really one of constitutionality. How, how would the, how would the, the ordinance be challenged? Civil ordinances that are, that are monetary still can be challenged based upon certain constitutional grounds. But I think that the ordinance is very clear in what the conduct that is intended to be prohibited. So I think on, on whether or not the, the ordinance is spatially invalid because it doesn't provide adequate notice to what the possible punishment might be and why, I, I don't think that there's a basis for the challenge. So I, I'm, I'm comfortable that, that under the circumstances of a pandemic with emergency powers that are being exercised with the conduct that's meant to be deterred, that the, the, a civil penalty will withstand a challenge in court. The other issue then comes down to what happens in any encounter where law enforcement is making determinations of whether to charge and what to charge with. I, I think that the application of this emergency resolution on social and limiting the number of people gathering in large part will play out as well based upon who the likely people are to violate the ordinance. We're making an assumption that it, that will be younger people because that's what we're seeing across the nation. And, and, and in terms of the spread of the virus. The other will be is the university's treatment. I mean, what I heard this, earlier in the meeting tonight was the university is going to take this very, very seriously when there, when it appears to me they didn't use the word graduated discipline, although it was implied, but what I heard was possible suspension or expulsion. We were not necessarily going to take history or prior conduct into account when we consider what the, the consequences will be. So I, I, let, let's face it. For a, a, a child who attends the, the university, who comes from a family of means, is a $500 or a thousand civil penalty going to be of consequence? Probably not. But suspension or expulsion will be. I've represented a number of students who've been involved in situations with discipline and at university, various universities throughout the state. And I can tell you, when you start telling, talking about suspension, no academic credit, no tuition refund. Doesn't matter how much money you've got, you're not happy to hear that consequence. So that is an evolving situation. I, I think that in the short time I've been the law director for the city, I, I feel like the police department has done a very good job of exercising appropriate discretion and how it chooses to interact and charge citizens and its interactions with students as well. And so I, I, I concur with what the chief said about how enforcement might occur. And I think you take it like everything else. I'm not suggesting selective enforcement, but you've got to look at it on a case by case basis and see what you've got.
Would raising it to $2,000 to start out with and three, four, or five after that change any of the, the factors in terms of it being upheld in different ways?
Yeah, that's a great question. I don't know. I, I haven't seen a lot of civil penalties challenged in that way. I mean, we certainly did in the, in the context of red light cameras, but the, the, there were a lot more issues there because of how that was played out and every community had a different version of it. I, what I would suggest is, you know, you've got a thousand dollars for any subsequent violations. You can always step it up based upon if there's one or more. But I will suggest that if the, the violators are affiliated with the university, I suspect that they get to a second one. And keeping in mind that the standard is lower than it is in a criminal court with the university. My recommendation would be play this out, see how it goes. You always have the authority to come back and amend.
Mr. Brackett, if, if I could answer Mr. Brackett's question about raising the fine, I, I mean, it sounds good from a policy standpoint, but then I think officers use their discretion. I don't know any police officer who enjoys giving a $500 fine and certainly a $2,000 fine. I, I, I mean, we can tell them, we want them to do that all they want, but they don't like giving speeding tickets sometimes, right? I mean, because you're affecting someone's pocketbook. So the practicality of doing it makes it challenging. So I think it's, I think it's in line with other civil tickets right where it is. That's just my opinion.
Okay.
Sorry, I think this matches what I was saying before though. Just like I don't want students suspended. I just want them to react to the possibility that they could be suspended, right? So I don't even want you necessarily putting these out there unless you have to, but I do want you to have the power to say, look, if you don't do this, here's what's coming. And it's not going to be 20, 30 bucks apiece for everybody in the party, which you'll gladly pay. It's going to be significant. And I just want that as a threat to prevent it because I'm not trying to hurt people. I'm trying to prevent them from doing something that's going to hurt people. And so I think we need some strength on it. And as I say this, I can hear out my window, multiple parties. And I had somebody go investigate them. And there's even more than I could hear dust in my block. Like this might be a disaster already. We might be a week behind. I'm trying to do everything we can to, to stop this because we know what the consequences are and everybody will be hurt from this in significant ways.
All right. Let me get Mr. Prithrid and then we'll come back to Mr. Snively.
Oh yeah. I mean, I think that as, as Chief Jones has explained, this could be paired with other things to make this a painful experience for anyone. And the consequences for students are high, but this is going to apply across Oxford. So I think we need to think about that. My last thing is just to say thank you to the Oxford Police Department because these are very complicated times, I'm sure, to be in policing in which community members are saying police should do less in some areas, and yet we're handing new responsibilities. And I think we've kind of forgotten and I don't, and we've forgotten, but we're not only asking them to do kind of something difficult to, you know, painful, it's a $500, we're, they're potentially walking into an infectious situation. And so they are first line responders in an era of pandemic. And so I don't ask police officers, I'm just, I'm grateful to the Oxford Police Department. I think Miami University ought to be very grateful to the Oxford Police Department also. Because you guys are the front lines in trying to contain what could really be a bad pandemic situation in Oxford. And, and I hope you view this as a tool, just an additional tool you can use. But I, it's not going to be easy to enforce it. So thank you.
All right. Mr. Snively.
Yeah, I, I totally appreciate the comments about making the, the fine higher and Jason's point is very well taken. On the other hand, I think the chief made it pretty clear why it's important to just leave it the way it is right now. Let's see if, if it needs to be any higher, but I want it to be something that it could be used. And I, and I think if it's too high, it would never be used and, and people would look at it that way. The other thing is that because we have the university cooperating with us when it comes to students, and this is not only students who have big parties, but if it is a student event, then I want the police to be able to feel like they can go ahead and give that charge so that it is evaluated by Miami University. And so I think the $500 is probably sufficient in that regard. And Miami may take care of it so there wouldn't be a second time.
All right. Looks like I've got no further comments. So if we're
Call the question.
All right. You may call the roll.
Ms. Sutherd?
Yes.
Mr. Brackett?
Yes.
Mr. Ellerby?
Yes.
Mr. Prithrid?
Thanks to staff, yes.
Ms. Raghu?
Yes.
Mr. Snively?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. All right. That resolution is adopted and as an emergency, it goes into effect immediately. We will move on to second readings. Ms. Eaton, you may read the first second reading whenever you're ready.
An ordinance repealing Oxford codified ordinance, chapter 137, entitled Housing Advisory Commission and adopting new Oxford codified ordinance, chapter 137, entitled Housing Advisory Commission.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Snively, second.
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor Sutherd. We'll go to Mr. Perry.
Hello, everyone. Thank you. This is no major changes since the first reading. There is one small change. Before I get into that, I'll just say that this was part of an effort from the Housing Advisory Commission to update the enabling legislation that hadn't been changed since 2003. So the change that is not reflected in your packet that the clerk and I would like to make is actually on page 46, if you have the hard copy packet. Or on page four of the attachment, if you're looking at the Granicus version. In the bold paragraph, just for clarity, we would like to add with the exception of council and planning commission members, so it's just three words, adding and planning commission, since those appointments and terms are done on an annual basis. Everything else is the same. So what this, this overall ordinance would do would would add some clarity to the purpose statements of the Housing Advisory Commission and better define what their role is, as well as broaden out that membership as you've discussed several times in the past. Happy to answer any questions.
All right. Mrs. Green, is anyone from the public who would like to address the ordinance before council?
No, I did not see any raised hands.
Right. Any council discussion? I see Mr. Ellerby's hand.
Just wanted to make the motion to pass those changes as a friendly amendment.
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor Suther. All right. If there is no further discussion, Ms. Eaton, you may call the roll whenever you're ready.
Mr. Brackett?
Yes.
Mr. Ellerby?
Yes.
Mr. Prithrid?
Yes.
Ms. Raghu? Mr. Snively?
Yes.
Ms. Sutherd?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. That ordinance is adopted. All right. We will go on to our second, second reading. Ms. Eaton, you may read that whenever you're ready.
An ordinance, amending ordinance number 3538, supplemental budget ordinance number five, to make supplemental appropriations for fiscal year 2020.
Motion to adopt? Moved by Mr. Snively, second.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Ellerby and I will go to Mr. Newland.
I asked on the the first item on was to make an adjustment to the budget for dispersment, remaining funds from the housing trust fund. In the, to the Family Resource Center for rental assistance for a customer suggested by the Housing Advisory Commission on July 21st work session with council. I increased this a little bit because I did give a, a little bit of interest revenue last month. So it's 5,90242 would be the amount of money that we'll be able to send the Family Resource Center. The next item was decreasing the budget to transfer from the General Fund of Aquatic Center Debt Service Fund due to excess funds being available in the Aquatic Center Improvement Fund. Transfer debt service. So in this, we're decreasing the revenue to the Aquatic Debt Service Fund by three, 308,500. Now as a transfer from the General Fund. And again, we're increasing the revenue in the Aquatic Center Debt Service Fund by 102,8984. And that'll be a transfer from the Aquatic Center Capital Improvement Fund. And on the expense side, we're decreasing the appropriation of, for 308,500. Now as a transfer to the Aquatic Center Debt Service Fund. And increasing in the Aquatic Center Capital Improvement Fund appropriation for 102,8984. And that's the transfer to the debt service one. On the next one, there is a additional retirement that was unbudgeted and they happened to be in the same department. So I increase this to 67,466 for two unbudgeted retirements. The next one was for make a adjustment to the budget for on a unbudgeted purchase of mobile electronic boards to be used for messaging messaging the city's face mask coordinates to students and visitors. Then I included Mike's Then I included Mike's letter. Why that was appropriate use of those funds. So it's increasing revenue in the capital equipment fund by 31,570. And on the expense side. Increase in the appropriation by 31,570. And Mike came back and it was lower cost, but again, we'll only spend the money that we transfer to the fund. We won't spend the additional money. And the last one is adjust adjustments for an insurance reimbursement and subsequent inquiry for for expenditure for squad. And the revenue and the firing MS squad fund is 16,76633, and the expense side is increasing appropriations by 16,76633 for the repair of the vehicle.
All right. Wait, I have to I have to ask for public comment. Anyone from the public would like to comment on this?
Sorry.
Right.
Yeah, there's no hand raised. Thank you.
All right. At this point, if there's no counsel discussion, I think we've seen this before. Ms. Eaton, you may call the roll whenever you're ready.
Mr. Ellerby. Mr. Pritrich.
Yes.
Ms. Ragoo. Mr. Snively.
Yes.
Ms. Sutherd.
Yes.
Mr. Bracken.
Yes.
Mr. Ellerby.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes, all right, that ordinance is also adopted. Moving on to announcements and communications, I'll start tonight with Mr. Elliott. Right, you're on mute. You're on mute, oh, here.
I I apologize for that. So I do want to thank, I know we've done it before, but I want to thank Dr. Moore and Dr. Brunel for joining us tonight. I think it demonstrates quite well the excellent working relationship we have with the university. No matter what office it is, and of course, it demonstrates their concern for the health of our community. So I just want to publicly thank them for that and the good working relationship that we have. It's so important now in this COVID crisis. Just wanted to share with you, too, we had stated at the last meeting, we would have a virtual meeting with the landlords. We had it last week. It was a very good meeting. And we had both Dr. Brunel and Moore at that meeting as well, too. So very good meeting. We're doing our very best to reach out to as many different organizations as we can. I know in the past I've given you information from the Butler County Board of Health regarding cases by zip code. They didn't, they weren't able to provide that this week. Instead, they did provide a GIS map of COVID cases. And if you had a chance to look at the map that they produced it. Each dot represents one case, and I think it was from March 11th through July 15th, so it did not include the month, the last 30 days, if you will. Interesting map there. And of course, as we all know, right now, within the Butler County, there's 3,293 confirmed cases, 48 probable cases for a total of 3,341. So, you know, we still need to be vigilant. We need to learn to live with this disease and do our very, very best. A couple of other things I just wanted to share with you that we believe I shared this with you the last time. As you know, we have the RFP out for the sale of the surplus land that the city owns. I believe we've had at least 18 interested parties, developers, as well as engineering firms. So hopefully we'll get some good proposals that we can report back to. And the last thing I believe I want to share with you, or the last two things, is just make another plug for our gift card program. Once again, it's helping our local businesses and we have few left to sell, and so we appreciate your support for that. And then, of course, we want to make another plug for the census. We had a young lady, a person that came into the City Hall and set up a table, but I have to share with you this year, probably most of the students signed up for utilities online. And so you didn't see the lines that we saw before. So that's that's one good thing that happened. I believe we signed up at least 930 accounts. So I wanted to share that with you, and that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dreisbach, is there anything you'd like to add tonight?
Just a couple of quick updates. Reminder, the new traffic control system is in at Chestnut and College. And that has pedestrian crossing signals as well. So that's operational. And progress is being made on the Oates Phase Two Trail System. That project should be complete in about four weeks, maybe five weeks. So that will be ready for this autumn to go biking or walking on. So thank you.
Fantastic. All right, Chief Jones, anything you'd like to add tonight?
Uh, no, thank you.
All right, Mr. Newland, anything you'd like to?
Nothing, no, thank you.
All right, I see Mr. Woodell is still on there. Is anything you'd like to add, Casey?
Yes, I'm here. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, just just a quick update. This Sunday evening is the last day for the Oxford Aquatic Center for this summer. And we will actually conclude that with our annual Dog Day Event, which is actually a doggy dip night this year. Which will be from 6 to 8 this Sunday night, and then we will pretty much immediately begin winterizing on Monday, that facility. I will say it's been a different summer, but we've had the ability to serve a lot of people at the Aquatic Center this summer. And I'll share with you, I learned from an article today from the Cincinnati Children's Hospital. I believe they said that the drownings that they have handled this summer have nearly quadrupled, and they are attributing that to backyard pools being used rather than community pools being open and available, which are lifeguarded and supervised. So I think the silver lining here might be that we did open and we did offer that service to our community. And so, you know, it's it's a good thing we did. You know, there's definitely risk involved, but we follow the state guidelines, we follow the protocols, and to our knowledge, there haven't been any cases traced directly back to the Aquatic Center. So I appreciate the support in letting us run that this summer, and we'll finish out the rest of the week and and yeah, we thank you.
All right, thank you. Chief Deathridge, I see you're still on there. Is there anything you'd like to add tonight?
No, sir, thank you.
All right. Oh, let's move around to Mrs. Green. Do you have anything tonight?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
All right. Mr. Perry, anything you'd like to add?
I just wanted to say that it was mentioned earlier that we have stayed in good communication with Family Resource Center. And they are seeing an increase in demand and need for rent assistance. Some of which is attributed to job loss. So I think that money is going to a good source. Also, as I put in my weekly report, we've we are closing in on 100% of full inspections. Hopefully by the end of this year. So there's been a handful of landlords that have been a little less interested in us doing the full interior inspection. And so we've been able, even with COVID, to make that happen, and we'll be able to complete those after the students that are in those units leave after the Thanksgiving break. So we're we're glad to do that. And so while it's not been related to COVID specifically, it is a life safety aspect that we don't talk about a lot, and it's important that we check those smoke detectors, make sure they're operational. So we don't have any any casualties. So I just want to give you an update on that's going well.
Right, it's good to hear. Ms. Eaton, anything you'd like to add tonight?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Right. Mr. Kennard, anything you'd like to contribute?
I've spoken enough this evening, thank you.
Right. Counselor Ragoo.
Thanks, Sam, for bringing that up. You know, I think that's something that is going to be inevitable, that the needs of the people of Oxford is going to only increase as this continues to go on for a prolonged period of time. So I I think that that's something for us to be very mindful of. And I think that, you know, there are other ways that we can be looking for usage of the money, and I think that the people closest to the pain, to quote Nina Turner. The people closest to the pain need to be closest to power. And I think that the more that we include people in all of our decisions is only the better. So I hope that the next time we use any type of funding for our budget or for the CARES Act, we make sure it is as transparent, as inclusive as possible.
All right. Mr. Ellerby.
Yeah, I just want to say to the public, you know, we're doing all this kind of stuff because while a great many people have varying opinions upon what's going on right now. I know from personal experience, this is pretty serious, and you need to make sure that you take it seriously. And that you might not have any symptoms, but it's not going to prevent somebody else from having a very different experience. So be conscientious of each other. We wouldn't have to pass these laws if everybody was taking other people's well-being into account in their behaviors. So just try to be excellent to each other.
All right. Vice Mayor Snively.
Good message, Glenn. I want to just recognize, first of all, Mike Dreisbach. I, Mike, I think you've just done an excellent job, and it's not easy, but I think you continue to do things in an excellent way. And I think the Chestnut Street is a good example of that, and I think the new light at College on Chestnut is working out really well, and the Oates Trail is looking great. So I think we have a fabulous service department. You run a good good operation there. So thank you very much. And I also want to echo what David said regarding the police department. This is a very difficult time. It's challenges that you didn't really probably expect or want. We really appreciate you. I do certainly, and I think all my colleagues do. Just hang in there and know that we support you, and thank you for your service.
All right. Counselor Sutherd.
Yes, thank you all for your your service. And, you know, I appreciated that that Chief Jones put a a notice on Facebook about about the theft of signs, which had upset many people. And, you know, it was not only election signs, it was also Black Lives Matter signs. So, you know, I'm glad you put out a notice and, you know. We all do, as as Counselor Ellerby has said, need to take care of each other. And, you know, the League of Women Voters, earlier, we we had a proclamation about Women's Equality Day. And, you know, which which recognizing the the passage of the 19th Amendment, which gave women the right to vote in the United States, you know, lots of people all over the world, lots of women did that and still don't have the right to vote. And you may not know, or the public may not realize that in Switzerland, women only got the right to vote in 1971. So, you know, it's it's not universal. This is just about the the 19th Amendment. We're just celebrating what's happening happened here 100 years ago. But we we need to get out the vote, and the League of Women Voters is doing its best to educate the public, and they had a big celebration in mind that that didn't that couldn't happen because of of the pandemic. But there is an exhibition which you can go see is across the street from the municipal building at the Community Arts Center. It's just very small, but very powerful exhibition of celebrating Women's Equality Day. So I encourage everybody to take a look at that. And to, you know, keeping a safe distance, of course, there are no crowds, and wish everybody a good, good week and a safe and good week. Thank you.
Counselor Bracken.
I have too many thoughts to even begin expressing them, but I would echo everything that the other counselors have said. And I'll just leave it with a thank you to all staff working on this, and hopefully we can contribute to mitigating the potential consequences of COVID going forward. Thank you.
Counselor Pritrich.
So I again want to echo thanks, and I want to state my pride. You know, city council is a role that you know, I think local government plays such an important role right now. The stakes are really high, and I'm proud of all that we've done. You know, I really do feel like the city of Oxford is doing everything it can to to try to increase the chances of success, and and it's not easy, and everybody's working really hard. But never has there been a time when I feel like every minute matters. So thank you. And because these are hard times, and I will refer to hard times to come. I'm going to ask that at some point in an upcoming meeting, maybe able to be part of our budget cycle. But Mr. Newland has been sharing with us some of the revenue dynamics. And, you know, he doesn't, we don't have a clear picture exactly of what we'll have going into 2021. But it will be difficult. And if, worst case scenario, Miami is not able to open to the spring. It's going to be very difficult in upcoming years. So I think we'll be talking about that, and I guess we'll be having some budget projections at that time. We will have to be looking at how to really belt tighten. But I guess this is my question to Mr. Newland and Mr. Elliott, is that, you know, I don't know whether, at what point, I think we need to be thinking on the cost side and the revenue side, like, how can we get through this? And and we can budget cut our, we're going to have to budget cut our way through some of this. But I I would like to hope that we can be creative on on the revenue side, too, and look at at least look at what options could be. And those will be time sensitive, too, because the mechanics for thinking about how you generate revenue. Mr. Ellerby talked, for example, about the I certainly hope that when the short term rental comes forward, I think that we'd be prepared to collect the taxes that ought to be due already under the 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 hotel and convention tax. But again, I think we're going to have to be creative 360 degrees in the next year or two. So again, I don't know whether that's part of the budget cycle, but if if maybe Mr. Newland or someone could give a presentation in an upcoming meeting on just big picture, like, what are we looking at? I think the public would appreciate having some kind of understanding of the choice that's the things are going to drive our choices in in the next year or so. So thank you again to everyone.
All right. I'll keep this short. I don't think there are a lot of Miami students are going to see this, but I'm going to reach out anyway. Last weekend was not a great start to the semester, in my opinion. You know, if you keep ignoring social distancing, you're not going to be able to keep your case count down, and that's really, you know, going to impact Miami's plans to come back face to face, and that's not good for anybody. So if you have to think twice about hosting a party, or you have to think twice about attending it, you probably shouldn't be doing it. As a Miami alum, I need all of you to be the men and women I know you can be. I know we're asking a lot, but you're going to have to grow up a little bit, and you're going to have to make some sacrifices for Miami and Oxford so we can get through this. I need you to keep doing the basics like washing your hands. For Oxford's most vulnerable population, I need you to wear your masks. And please keep your gatherings to under 10 people. We need to slow the community spread that's going to happen. So I've done enough preaching. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Please call the roll to adjourn.
Mr. Pritrich.
Yes.
Ms. Ragoo. Mr. Snively.
Yes.
Ms. Sutherd.
Yes.
Bracken.
Yes.
Mr. Ellerby.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes. All right, thanks, everybody. That was another great meeting. So have a good week. I'll see you, everybody on.